Okay.
Yeah.
You're excited?
Yeah, yeah.
You...
Yes.
I'm just packing these out.
Oh, my God.
Always like my hair.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good.
Hello.
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 Now that I'm just packing these out.
Oh, my God.
Always like my hair.
Oh.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know where your side is.
Really?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, well.
I'm gonna put it here.
I know.
Catwalks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna do without a sticker.
Ow.
How are you drinking?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good.
Good.
I got it there.
Yeah, that's my wife.
I get this here.
I went to the water.
I know.
Nobody.
I know.
Nobody.
I know.
Don't really know.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
I know.
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 Catwalks.
Yeah.
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 Good evening.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good.
Good.
I'm here.
Yeah.
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 Thank you.
Are you sure that's me?
Yes, if I'm not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wait a second.
No, wait.
Yeah.
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 Hey, Amy, are you there?
Okay.
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 I hope you realize even if I did, like what I think you're discussing with six weeks, you know, because there'll be a new person called counsel and family.
What?
Yeah.
Oh, you know what, though?
I'd love to come back and contact you.
It's funny, you know, it's funny that's the issue because, uh, we got something that,
uh, maybe speaking of that tonight.
It's gonna hear it anyway.
Mentioned to him that he was.
Beep.
That might open the door.
Beep.
So.
Beep.
So two full sides of this.
Beep.
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 Hello?
Hey, Amy, it's Sam.
Hey.
Hey.
Sorry, um, just wanna put you on hold here just for a second, but at least have
you on the phone, so just kinda hang tight.
Sure.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Governing by agenda. Awesome. Too much already?
Wow, I would die.
I'm supposed to use that one. We're just supposed to use that one. No, I think that's just as good as. Yeah. Yeah. See, not on hold or she's ready for. Okay, but she's not on hold. Okay.
Let me know when we're recording over there.
You are, or?
That's the recorder.
Yeah, okay, great. Amy, we've got you online here. Amy, can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the city council regular meeting. Please prepare for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Our gracious heavenly father, thank you for bringing us together this evening to, um, conduct the business of the city. Father, I thank you for, uh, the service of those who have, uh, served and are moving to new endeavors tonight, and thank you for the new council. I just pray, Father, that the transition would go smoothly and that, um, you just would be honored and glorified this evening. Thank you, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Member Olson, welcome everyone. Member Berantine?
Here.
Member Gillett?
Present.
Member Martinez?
Present.
Member Russell?
Present.
And Member Yates?
Here.
Mayor Jefferson?
Here.
Point of order?
All seven. Present.
Um, we have a, uh, member who's declaring that they're present at this meeting and apparently by our agenda intending to participate in this meeting, um, which is neither our procedures nor our policy. In the history of this council, we have not ever had anybody participate this way, and it is by our charter that we are required to set the meeting by ordinance, and we have not done that. So I object to any member participating via phone without a proper process or procedure. So if you want me to go into any of the, um, ordinances that we have, and, um, I realize that the comment was made, it's just an ordinance, but everybody in this room, some dearly feel our ordinances, and we are obligated to follow the law as well, so we need to have that discussion.
Sure, if you have a specific prohibition, please read that. I'm happy to hear any specific prohibition, uh, you may have found.
Um, currently right now in the, um, charter alone, there are thirteen times when the word present, which is apparently what the word present has come under attack to be, um, further defined or qualified. Um, and unqualified people have seemed to have understand what the word present meant in our charter. It occurs thirteen times if we change the word or the meaning or the intent of what present is, then we also need to understand that we're changing the other thirteen places that it shows up and the ninety-five times that it shows up in our municipal code. And I think that's a slippery slope for us to go down. In the section, Article Five, under ordinances, under voting, every ordinance shall require that the affirmative vote of the majority of the members of membership of the entire council for final passage. Um, resolutions, motions shall require the affirmative vote of a majority of the quorum present. In setting our, um, rules, that's under council meetings, which is under section of the charter, that is, um, Article Two, um, I'm sorry, Article Three, under legislative body. Um, and it is section twenty-seven under council meetings. Spare everybody the first part of it. The second part of it says, um, "Council shall by ordinance prescribe the rules of procedure governing meetings. All meetings for the transaction of business shall be open to the public," and then it goes on. We have, um, not even discussed this, let alone voted on it, and how this is, um, how we're supposed to move forward with this. I am somewhat resigned, understanding that my fellow council members may not agree with me, and this council may wish to go out like it came in, not following the law. We have to make sure that, um, we adhere to the ordinances that we expect the public to adhere to, and if we're going to change something this important, and it only happens when, um, for a very specific purpose, without understanding how much of the charter and ordinance we're gonna be changing by doing this wordsmithing to do political gamesmanship, I think is a slippery slope for us to go down, and I think that we ought to, um, have a conversation at least, um, or follow the procedure publicly if we're going to change the way that we hold our meetings and not just have one person place it on the agenda that they intend to go ahead and participate and vote in this meeting via phone when that has not been established by this council as a whole.
Thank you. I'll attempt to sort of rule on this point of order as the, um, um, presiding officer of this meeting. Um, you know, I will take the initial position that, uh, the city attorney's office has recommended. I believe all members of this body have received a copy of that memorandum, uh, basically saying that there is no specific ban here locally, uh, in any of our local rules, uh, as far as prohibiting the ability to both be considered be present or, uh, the ability to vote, uh, through technology or via phone. I will ask the city's attorney's office, given the argument being presented here, are you aware of the term "present" being defined, um, either in the charter or code documents, uh, city attorney's office?
No, the word present is not defined anywhere, uh, and there is no, um, not only is it not defined in the charter, it's not defined in the codes, and there's nothing about this matter whatsoever in the policy and procedures.
That being said, I, I am hesitant to attempt to enforce a rule that does not exist. I will acknowledge, however, the general practice of this body during the decade of service, uh, that I've been around, um, this precedent has not happened before. We have not had a member, uh, vote via phone. Um, you know, that being said, I would suggest, uh, to council member Berantine or others who might have an objection on this, uh, they are, in my mind, welcome to, uh, motion to try to prohibit this here tonight, um, uh, some action on this tonight. Uh, but again, my, um, position is that, um, minus a specific rule prohibiting, uh, due to the contemplation via, uh, state law, um, that this is generally allowed, um, and that it would take a affirmative action of this body to definitively deny, uh, this member's opportunity to participate in this evening's meeting, and I'm open to sort of hearing that. That being said, uh, I would like to finish the roll call, uh, and perhaps there might be, um, some discussion or, um, pre, uh, motions or things on this issue. Um, or perhaps I'll open it up for that before we close the roll. Um, council member Berantine, did you have further comment here?
Um, I would disagree with the city attorney and with the mayor in that in order to go ahead and do this as any municipal, um, entity is done or governmental entity who has, and there are a few, a handful, that have allowed, uh, phone participation and even phone voting, and they have only happened by affirming somebody had the right to do it, not by a negative. Uh, in the last meeting, the city attorney agreed that just because the charter does not, um, specifically, um, um, address that, does not automatically give somebody the right to do it, and it certainly doesn't give them the right to do it autonomously outside of, uh, conversation and action and process and procedure by this body and public notice. Also, the current policies, the current council policies, um, if, if we change this, my concern again is we're changing the word and the meaning thirteen times in the char- charter, ninety-five times in the municipal code, and even, um, what looks to be at least fifty that I counted in our current coun- council policies. And so, um, given that this council has not voted on this, to affirmatively give anybody the right, um, to go ahead and participate in a meeting like this, and that it is specifically prohibited, and the city attorney has already agreed in an executive session for anybody to attend or to vote because nobody is aware of what they're doing or what's going on or who's with them or what state of mind they're in, um, or who else is with them or how they're being influenced, and this public has a right to know, uh, when we're governing and taking action, uh, how we're doing that, and that's why we need to be present. And I think there's not too many people in the community or that have talked to me or that are in this room that don't understand the word present. I would make a motion that we would not allow, at this point, any members to participate in a city council business meeting via phone or to vote via phone until the council has had an opportunity to discuss and properly vet the situation and vote.
Thank you. I hear a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion on this motion? Council member Russell?
Um, I just have a question, um, and this may be for you or for the city attorney. Was her opinion posted to the public?
I don't believe so. I believe that was a, um, an attempt to, uh, honor attorney-client privilege, uh, something that is a private communication that is provided to the city council. Um, city attorney, do you have anything to add?
Could I ask one question?
Please.
Um, I think the, and it's only for you to confirm what I believe you said at the last meeting, was that you advise us, you give us an opinion, you do not do a ruling, and that what you are presenting to us is not a ruling of what is or isn't to be, but is an opinion given to council as far as advice for a specific question you were asked by a member of this council.
Yes, that's correct. I'm not trying to tell you what to do. I'm only telling you what the laws allow, um, and at this point, the prohibition that you spoke of earlier about executive sessions comes from the open meetings, uh, law. Other than that, I'm not finding any prohibition, so at this point, this is a decision that the governing body's going to have to make.
But when it was discussed at the other meeting, then there was some agreement that just because there's no prohibition of, of it doesn't mean that it's a right.
I can only give you the legal answer, and the legal answer is if something is not prohibited, typically it's not an unlawful act. That's all I can do. I, I can't tell you what the right answer is here. There is no prohibition in your charter, your code, or state law. That's all I've got.
We have a motion in a second on the table. Further comments on the motion in a second? Um, you know, I did wanna comment. I, um, recognize this is kind of an odd situation, um, for everybody here in the city, um, you know, partially, I think, created by my election and vacation, uh, potentially of this position in the near future. Um, and so, um, you know, I did just want to, you know, offer, um, some, you know, brief comments, um, I guess before we actually vote on this. Yeah, I recognize that historically, you know, we have observed, I, what I believe now to be an unwritten rule here in the city, um, that people did not generally vote or participate. As I've said, I'm hesitant to enforce an unwritten rule. However, tonight we have a special meeting. Uh, tonight's, uh, generally the meeting where we select our new political leadership for the city. As you can tell, I think by the attendance in this meeting here tonight, uh, the public is very interested in, uh, who this political leadership is going to be and the process by which the city arrives at that. Um, and I'm hesitant to exclude a member, uh, in, in such a meeting like this, uh, in order to, I think, assure the public that, uh, all members will be heard, uh, on this issue. Um, so while I recognize that this can be problematic, uh, I think this can be a slippery slope. I do not want this to turn into council members who are in town not, you know, participating via this meeting, uh, on their couch in their boxers or something, and nobody attending this meeting. I, I think that would be a terrible disservice to the community and to the public. However, um, I will, um, be voting, um, no on this matter, um, and suggest to this body that we need to define what the policy is on this very soon so that this, uh, slippery slope issue doesn't sort of continue. Uh, council member Russell?
Um, I agree that this is a very important decision, um, but it's very clear in the charter, um, when this vote will take place or in the, um, in the municipal code, um, every time, every, after every general election, there will be a vote of the mayor, um, at the following council meeting. It is public, um, it has been the same forever. I mean, probably as long as the city has had a charter. Um, council members can choose to take vacation whenever they want. That is their prerogative. The danger is when we choose to take a vacation, um, perhaps it is an important meeting like this. Um, but, a- and it's a sad thing that, uh, the constituents don't get representation, but it was by a choice of the council member. Um, and so, um, I, I think that it is very slippery slope to go down with this, um, and, um, I too will be voting no on this.
The motion is to not allow, uh, council member Martinez's, um, participation tonight?
Oh, it's to not? Is that, okay, then I will be voting, I will be voting yes on this matter.
Thank you. Council member Berantine?
Um, I appreciate that the mayor has taken responsibility for council member Martinez taking a honeymoon. Um, that was not due to your election. Um, this situation did not arise because you were elected or not elected judge. I assume that she would not have changed her honeymoon if you had not been elected judge. I, I hope that the wedding wouldn't have been called off. Um, uh, it is, however, important that it is the election of mayor, and it is important, uh, because it's, it's said in the charter, and once we do this, my concern is, uh, when we pick and choose, which the council has and I have fought back against for two years and prior to my getting on, is when you pick and choose what laws you will follow, when it is expedient, when it is convenient, when it is, um, politically in your favor to go ahead and try and do these kind of game-playing issues. This is not the first time council member Martinez did not come to a meeting, or quite honestly, I think I'm the only one who's actually attended every one for the last two years. So, um, there's a, a myriad of reasons. There's been people who've been in the hospital, and, um, I think that it is a slippery slope once we start picking and choosing and redefining words and concepts just because it's expedient at the time. Um, that's dangerous. Um, so, and, and I, quite honestly, I don't think, and I've been, congratulations to council member Martinez on her wedding in August, uh, but her honeymoon is not as an important a situation to either suspend the rules or the procedures or the policies of this council, um, because she wants to go ahead and be part of the mayor election and didn't wanna change her vacation.
Thank you. Um, seeing no further comments, please vote.
and choose what laws you will follow, when it is expedient, when it is convenient, when it is politically in your favor to go ahead and try and do these kind of game-playing issues. This is not the first time Councilmember Martinez did not come to a meeting, or quite honestly, I think I'm the only one who's actually attended every one for the last two years. So there's a myriad of reasons. There's been people who've been in the hospital. And I think that it is a slippery slope once we start picking and choosing and redefining words and concepts just because it's expedient at the time. That's dangerous. So, and quite honestly, I don't think, and congratulations to Councilmember Martinez on her wedding in August, but her honeymoon is not as an important a situation to either suspend the rules or the procedures or the policies of this council because she wants to go ahead and be part of the mayor election and didn't want to change her vacation.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, please vote.
I will be voting no.
We're deciding whether she's voting or not. How can we do that?
I don't think it's okay for another council member to push her button, point of order.
I can accept her verbal vote. All votes have been cast. Let the record show, two ayes and five nays. Nays being Member Olson, Mayor Jefferson, Member Yates, Member Martinez, and Member Gillett.
Yeah, given, I apologize, I didn't gain an opportunity to rule on your point of order there, but given the four-two nature of that vote, regardless, I will not ask for a recount or a revote. I will move on to Mayor Protem Gillett.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we allow, by a move of this body, to allow Skype or phone for special meetings.
Second. Special meetings.
Special meetings, including?
Regular.
Regular meetings.
Thank you. Second, okay with that. Friendly amendment there. Thank you. Councilmember Barantone.
In order to, again, I know everybody wants to go ahead and just do the laws they want when they want it, and I'm confused that it would even be set by this council and not the new council. Counsel shall by ordinance prescribe the rules of procedure governing meetings by ordinance. Counsel shall by ordinance. I assume after eight years and four years that the outgoing council members know what an ordinance and the procedure of an ordinance is. There is a procedure for the ordinance. That's what it says in the rule. I didn't write it, but I intend to follow it. So you can't just change the meeting or the procedures for the meeting. That's why it's written in here, so that everybody knows what the rules are and how we handle things. And so since that's not in an ordinance, we can't do that.
You know, I apologize. I'm not sure that I caught exactly what you were saying there, Councilmember Barantone. Could you clarify what you were saying is written where?
The same one I read before. That is under Article III, Legislative Body, says that counsel shall by ordinance prescribe the rules of procedure governing meetings. That doesn't mean willy-nilly that when it's convenient for you, especially, I'm a little confused that we would even be considering rules when we're switching over a council like this, but you can't just all of a sudden decide you're going to do the meeting different in the middle of the meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates.
Well, the first thing is, this is a rule that we're working with, and rules are not law.
Point of order.
Yes, they are.
Ma'am.
This discussion is not on the agenda, and it's not even pertinent to what we are doing right now. It's something for future discussion.
I will.
I feel it's as pertinent as the last motion, given the roll call issue of Councilmember Martinez's presence. I am going to allow this motion. Councilmember Yates.
Oh, I think I don't need to say anything more. The audience knows what's being done here.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
So I would like to ask our city attorney if she feels comfortable doing it. I know this is putting you on the spot. If you would like to give any sort of perspective on this, if you'd prefer not to at this point because it came out of the blue, it's fine.
Charter number 27 refers to setting meeting times pursuant to the rules and procedures of each council. Three lines down in there, it says counsel shall by ordinance prescribe the rules of procedure. I interpret the rules of procedure to be Robert's rules of procedure, any other rules of procedure that this council wants to adopt. This council's never adopted the policies or rules by ordinance. I've been going back and forth trying to figure out if some of them have been adopted by resolution. Most of them are adopted by motion. So if you want to call this a rule of procedure, then yes, it would need an ordinance. If it's a policy, it needs a motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson, any further comments or questions?
That helps for now. Thanks.
Councilmember Barantone.
If the two outgoing members of this council wish to go ahead and make an ordinance, a motion, to try to bind a future council into not following what I believe is the law, continue on.
Mayor Protem. Might begin with a clarification of whether you view this as an ordinance issue or a motion issue or?
It's a procedural issue, which we can do by motion. Am I correct, sir, the attorney?
This city adopted an ordinance or resolution back in the early 90s, late 80s that said you can set your policies by motion. Most of the rules of this governing body are policies. The rules of procedure, which would be the Robert's rules of procedure or whatever rules of procedure this city decides to adopt, would be procedural rules, the thought interpreted, since the two have always been handled that way historically by this council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that clarification. Call for the vote.
Thank you. You know, I will support this. You know, that being said, I know that this is not, as stated, the best policy that we can come up with. In my mind, this is a temporary solution to get us through this evening, and that this next council will need to take this issue up and define this policy more definitively for our community moving forward. No further comments, please vote.
Can?
Oh, Councilmember Russell.
Can we repeat the motion? Can the motion be repeated?
Motion is to allow phone or Skype as present in city meetings, as city council meetings or special meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further comments, please vote.
I'll be voting yes.
All votes have been cast.
Excuse?
Let the record show, five ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Russell and Councilmember Barantone.
I thought you said before that the vote was four to two regardless, and that is fine. I do have a problem with a point of order with another council member pushing a button for another council member.
I don't, I don't think that's what happened. I think there was a verbal indication via phone and that the city clerk's office was pushing that button, if you will.
I don't think so.
I physically pushed the button because Amy had mentioned that she wanted to vote a yes.
You pushed her button.
Twice.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. You know, regardless, I think had there been a point?
There was a verbal, a verbal vote on the record, so that's what was accepted, was the verbal.
Okay, so it'll reflect verbal in the minutes of the?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, will the clerk please conclude the roll call?
I had one other point of order then.
Point of order.
Have we at least come up with some?
Please.
Since we've not done this, not discussed it, and one person, this game-playing is getting tiring, but how are we supposed to proceed? That's not unexpected either. How are we supposed to proceed in order to make, have her be recognized, since we're supposed to press a button to be recognized? How are we going to make sure that she's being able to participate? Because none of this has been discussed, or how we're going to do this. And I do not think, I don't think it's appropriate for another council person to actually vote for another council person. If there's a voice vote, then we need to have some procedures for doing this, whether it goes through the clerk. And since this has been behind-the-scenes, backdoor gamesmanship going on, none of this has been discussed on how to handle this. So if we're going to do this, at least for the first half of the meeting, because then the next council can decide what's going to go on, we need to know how we can function.
Sure. You know, just responding to, I see two sort of point of orders issues there. One is, you know, the presiding officer of this meeting. I will be working with Councilmember Martinez. I can hear her verbal cues. If she wants to get in the queue to be able to speak on any issue this evening, I will be managing that personally. As far as the inappropriateness of council members pressing another council member's button, I generally agree. I think what we've heard from the clerk's office is the definition of the authority of that was actually verbal, and that that verbal action is what is the voting action, not necessarily the mechanism of pushing the button. So hopefully, that distinction helps us. I would like to move us on past roll call. Councilmember Olson.
So I, one of the things I think that we need to be doing is, we have a microphone up here upon this speaker here, and so are we saying that she'll speak up at any point? Or can you see something else, just so that everybody out there knows?
No, I'm just.
She has to speak up here.
Correct.
In order to say something.
Amy, if you want to say something, you'll just say, hey, can I talk soon? And I'll put you in the queue and then recognize you when it's your time.
So I just wanted the public?
Sounds great.
Because you can't see what's going on up here. The other, the other thing would be perhaps we could use the other microphone, so I won't share with you. Otherwise, if not, I'll share with you and?
We've got enough mic.
The only other concern is that no other council member is recognized by just speaking out, so we're going to need to come up with some protocol on how to do that.
Sure.
I think the mayor just did that, saying all she had to do is talk up and you'd recognize her. You'd get her in the queue.
You have to be recognized when you're on the dais.
Yes.
Well, it doesn't stop you most of the time.
Let's, let's move on here. I would like to ask the clerk to conclude the roll call, please.
All seven members present.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item 5. This is consideration of minutes of previous session. I would entertain a motion on 5A.
Second.
Thank you. I've got a motion to approve and a second. Any comments or changes? Seeing none, please vote.
I will be voting yes.
Thank you.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to 5B1 and ask the city clerk to announce the status of the election.
All right. Based on the unofficial election results provided by Arapahoe County, only because the canvassing will not be complete until tomorrow, as some jurisdictions may need a recount, but for us, for the city of Inglewood, the election results provided by Arapahoe County, the newly elected council members are District 2 Councilmember Linda Olson, District 4 Councilmember Dave Questa, and at-large Councilmember Cheryl Wink.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion on its determination of the election results and the qualifications of the new members.
Second.
Thank you. I've got a motion in a second on this item. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
I'll be voting yes.
Thank you.
All votes are cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to 5B3, and I'd like to turn the floor over to our departing members of city council. However, before I do that, I would like to offer on behalf of the citizens of City Inglewood, thanking both members for their many years of service. You know, sometimes the job as an elected official is, is a little bit thankless, and so I wanted to take this opportunity to personally thank both of you gentlemen. I've had the opportunity and the honor of serving with Councilmember Yates for four years, Mayor Protem, Rick Gillett for eight years, and the countless hours that I know that you gentlemen have poured into the community is appreciated. So, you know, and I know that, you know, we haven't always agreed, but the one thing I knew about both of these gentlemen is that I never questioned their love for the city and that they, what they always, they always acted and how they thought was in the best interest of the community and in the city of Inglewood. So first, I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem for any comments or recognition of family members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first want to thank our wonderful staff for eight years of good guidance. Newcoming members, staff will direct you, they will help you understand. They are here to help. They are not here to do anything but make sure that your job is easier, that you have the information that you need. They are well-trusted people in my heart, and if they don't know something, they will help you. There are a lot of people who will come before you, who think they know everything but know very little. Staff generally has most of the answers, and if not, they know where to find it. Don't break them. You know, help them to, help them to flourish, and the people who work for the city, they're going to rely on you to help them move forward. And I just wanted to thank City Manager Keck and City Attorney Brown, best two hires I was ever part of, and I think some of the best decisions by this council that were made. And I just thank you, and I wish you the best. And to the community that I've served for eight years, you know, I had, over the week, I've had so many calls of, you know, thanks and appreciation, and I really, I've been honored to, to stay up late nights with people and to, you know, to work through situations that people have done, and I've been honored to be allowed to do that. And I know that my replacement, Mr. Questa, will have that same passion and that same vision to love our community and always do the best for them. You know, people won't always agree with you. In fact, you know, the people you'll hear from, most of the people will be the minority of the people, because most happy people don't come out and yell at you. So when, you know, we have a small group yelling at you, generally, there's others that are happy, and it's a tough balance, and it's been hard. And there's been tough nights, and we've done a lot of things. We came out of a horrible recession when I came on in 2009, and Linda. And we worked through tough things, but this city is nothing like it was eight years ago. You know, I can drive through and drive around and say, these were great decisions made by council. And I challenge the next council to be as innovative, to be as forward-looking, and to be as caring for the future of our city as the people that I have served with are. And the last, I just want to thank my father and Savior and Lord Jesus Christ, just for the opportunity to be part of something that I know that is in his will and his direction. And I get to, I told somebody, serving on council is like being in a zoo. You're an animal in a zoo where people can come and poke at you, and you really can't do anything back. But tonight, I get released back into the wild. So members of this council will hear from me, and I will still be active, and I still desire and care for the future of our city, and I pray that our new council has that same blessing and that same care. I've had so many people call me and pray with me. It's just been amazing. And if that offends you, I'm sorry, but it doesn't offend me. And I'm grateful for everyone, and I'm grateful for the new members dedicating their lives to the future of our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
The past four years has been probably one of the most rewarding time in my life. I've seen a lot of wonderful things happen in this community. I've gotten a really good chance at meeting a large number of people, making a lot of new friends, and helping to build a community with the guidance of the community. I'd also like to say thank you to Eric and Allison and the police department, the fire department, and all of staff that's really, they really go out there day after day after day to create a community that's safe and that people want to be here. It's truly a wonderful thing. I'm not a religious sort of guy, but sitting up here and watching how government works, at times, I'd say that there is, there definitely is a hand involved in helping guidance. And there is a wisdom that comes from seven members up here versus one personality. Now, I'd also like to say to my opponents, I see Joe's here and obviously Cheryl's here, this was a great campaign. We agreed early to be civil and to talk about issues. And what it showed our community is that we are a community. We can talk about things without smearing each other or trying to create arguments among candidates, which I will say that there are members in this room right now that literally tried to get us to fight with each other. I find that very despicable. But both of, both Cheryl and Joe, they're, they're good people, and they didn't allow, let's say, a gremlin to whisper into their ear. Our community is about a place where we can live and be happy and to enjoy, and it can happen. We can, we can, we can take care of day-to-day business without being game players, without having situations where people are trying to pit one against the other. The purpose of council, which, which has been a real problem over the past four years, is trying to get us to a point where we try to envision a future, give staff some instruction of where we want to be in 2030. We get, we get bogged down by the mechanics, day-to-day dogma. And frankly, a lot of that's supposed to be done by staff, not by us up here. We're not in the trenches, and frankly, if we want to be in the trenches and we want to actually do the, the going out and giving a ticket or doing whatever a position happens to be in the city, then we should step down from this dais and apply for a job. We were elected to help our community, create a community, and have vision. So it was a little sad, you know, the next day after the election, but it was also a great relief for me. My business is extremely busy, and Cheryl ran a fantastic campaign, so did Joe. I'll admit to the community, I didn't campaign. I didn't put a dime towards it. So, you know, it was, it was best that we have people with more, with new energy and new ideas and new skills to come up and lead our community to the next step. I will, I will miss serving the community in this capacity, but it doesn't mean I'm walking away. I still have lots of things I'd like to accomplish, and I want to be still a big part of what goes on within our community. Thank you, everybody. I really thank you. I appreciate it, and I love our community. Thanks.
Do you have some further comments? Councilmember Olson.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to both, both of the council members. Councilmember Yates, I think I've told you this, we've had quite a few conversations about the way life changes in four years when you work together in this kind of setting, and it's been such an amazing transformation of our professional relationship and friendship. One of the words I, I think of when I think of you, Steve, is growth, and I've said this before, and I hope you take this well, but oftentimes, people think adults really don't grow much. And yet, if I could grow half as much as you have in four years in your focus and trying to think in different ways, man, I would be a happy woman. So I, I'm amazed and I'm awed at the things that you've learned and taken to heart and really put into practice here, so I'm going to miss working with you on that. And you have big shoes to fill, because he's, he's a growing, educated kind of person that wants to keep learning. Rick, I don't think anyone would have expected in eight years that I might cry saying goodbye to you, because that's not how we started up here. And another transformation in learning how to work together gives me hope for the national scene, that actually you can start out in really opposite ways on a number of things and then find common ground. And the phrase that I will never forget? And the phrase that I will never forget that you say it a lot, I don't know if you've ever noticed it, but you say, "That just isn't right, that just isn't right." So, that's going to be ringing in my head as I go forward thinking, "What would Rick say?" He'd probably say, "No, that doesn't sound right, that's just not right." So, I appreciate your heart for the city and your citizens. You've represented your district really, really well. You've always fought for them, you've driven me nuts sometimes in that process. And yet, I think they always got the best of you. So, I do hope that as you leave, you will stay engaged and find ways to bring your voice because it's still needed. You two have grown a lot and learned a lot, I've learned a lot from you as well. So, thank you for your time of service and for your patience with me as well. I'm going to miss you.
Thank you all for your comments and to the departing members for your many years of service. I too am very proud of what we've accomplished together for the citizens and for the people of the city of Inglewood. Everyone, Mayor Protam, Rick Gillen, and Councilmember Stephen Yates. Thank you, and now I'll move-
Can you take my nameplate with me?
Yes, you do, we got a keepscape. And we're going to get an opportunity for a little punch and cookie reception here. But before we do that, the next probably most exciting portion of our evening, five v. four, I would like to now introduce the Honorable Judge Christopher Bux. Are you back there? Come on up, Judge. Judge is going to help us this evening in the swearing-in of our newly-elected councilmembers as well as our re-elected councilmembers. So, if I could get our two newest members to join the judge up front along with Councilmember Olson, we can begin this process. Judge, I'll turn the floor over to you. Do you have any comments or anything, maybe from the dais or anything?
I don't believe I do, but I'll have to say welcome. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here and invite me to participate in this robust discussion we've already seen tonight. I'm looking forward to watching all of your presentations. I suppose we'll do this all as a group, so if you'd raise your hand. I-
I'm the chair.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter and Orifices of the City of Inglewood.
And the Charter and Orifices of the City of Inglewood.
And that I will-
And that I will-
Do the best of my ability-
Do the best of my ability-
Faithfully perform the duties of office-
Faithfully perform the duties of office-
As councilmember during my continuance there.
As councilmember during my continuance there.
Thank you.
You know, at this time, I would invite all the members of council, perhaps in front of the dais here for a photo op with our newest members, and then they'll get to sign their life away here during the- Make this official.
All of us.
Was that right, Steph?
A R O.
Reed?
A.
Oh, A, A.
That was Reed.
Sorry, I just had to add something to that.
Okay.
No, no problem, thank you.
Okay, we should have that.
Okay, folks, I'd like to begin to call this meeting back to order if folks would begin to take their seats. We'll get started here in just one minute. I invite Councilmember David Questa up as well. Thank you, we'd like to call this meeting back to order. Thank you everyone for the wonderful reception. We are seated now in our temporary spaces. I would ask the clerk to recall the roll with the new members.
Yes, sir. Member Olson?
Good evening again.
Member Berantine?
Here. Not present.
Member Questa?
Present.
Member Martinez?
Oh, I hope we don't lose her.
Member Jefferson?
Here.
And we'll give it just a moment while we connect with Councilmember Martinez.
Hi, this is Amy. I can't get to the phone right now, so maybe I can... Okay, thanks.
Okay. Point of order, I really don't think we need this kind of disruption to the meeting. Can we... Yeah, I'm going to ask IT to attempt to connect again and if we're unable to connect here in about a minute, we will move on past the roll call without Councilmember Martinez's presence.
That's a honeymoon for you.
So there's, there's... It's your first.
So we got room there.
Oh. It's raining for you. He cannot, why does he do that? Do we have an extra one? Can I swap it out? Did you put things in there?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. So there's, there's... It's your first.
So we got room there.
So here's... Hi. Like, I'm... Can I talk to you? Shh. Yeah, but I just... Everybody's gay.
I, I... I'd like to take... Yes. I... She's sleepy. She's like, uh...
Is the baby asleep?
She's actually too old for this.
I treat her. Have a good night. Oh. 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 Yeah, but I just... Everybody's gay. That's all. Okay.
I, I... I'd like to take... Yes. I... Wait.
She's sleepy.
Yeah.
Does the baby is home?
Yeah. She's actually too home. She's...
Yeah. Have a good night. Oh. 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 Oh.
She's sleepy. She's like, uh...
Does the baby is home?
Yeah. She's actually too home. She's... She's... She's too home. She's...
Sure. Yeah. Have a good night. Oh. 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 Apparently not. It looks...
Oh, they, I think they just threw it up there. It's like a light. Yeah. It's like a light.
Yep. 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 Who are you snapping at too? Which is my story. But, look. I, I mean, I would... Right. What? You, you don't want me to, I don't mind. I know it's hard on you. But, does it look like you? I have to do it. Probably. She's... Amy? Amy? We have to call her back. Down.
Oh, yeah. It's not... You, you would see the count, the timer. Well, we just said redial. Redial. Redial.
Wow, these are nicer than... They're green. You know, it's okay. It's sure... Yeah. 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 Amy? 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 We have to call her back. Down.
Oh, yeah. It's not... You, you would see the count, the timer. Well, we just said redial. Redial. Redial.
Wow, these are nicer than... They're green. You know, it's okay. It's sure... Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Um, just see, but, um...
But.
Uh, live stream. It's... 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 It's...
Oh, yeah.
It's something you want to... You know, I could... Jeff, you know... You're spending... Fine. Now, we'll... It's... 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 Yeah. For doing it till then. Hey. 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 Yeah, thank you.
Hello?
Hello, we're back again.
Hi, great.
Okay, yeah, just same time.
Okay. All new role.
Okay, to me? No, what time we hold?
Uh-huh. It's, uh, probably tomorrow?
Yeah.
Will that be timestamped?
Yeah.
It's okay, we might be able to figure it out.
Yeah.
Huh?
She can't see at all.
I don't know. Can Ellison see it now?
She's... She's... I have to see the... I have to... See. For what?
Hey, girl, you can see them here now?
Um...
It's good. It's good. And then we'll do the rearranging, so...
Yeah. Yeah. Right. Watch it.
Oh, mine too.
Oh, mine too. Oh, I try to do it on my phone too. It says it's three. It's... Respect. Good, thank you. You don't think that's good sound? I'm like, I hate. I only have one earring. Joe?
Yes, ma'am.
You know that you work at Orvis.
Sure, we can... Let me get the sign up sheet for you.
You could have mentioned president.
I'm sorry.
She could only give you legal.
Correct.
But you could have nothing. You could have mentioned present. Present.
Really? Sorry.
And I think I did.
You did it around by way, but then you turned around. You should have hung on president because until you change the other way, now you're making a exception without a proper vote. Yeah. That's the first vote that they were trying to avoid.
Yes. And then I also discussed in my comments, I don't know, I mean, it was, it was difficult, but I think we ended up in a good spot for the session.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Can't give that to the church.
Had Aaron Reed... I think he was very decisive.
Thank you.
Don't worry. Perfect. Was that right, Steph? A R O. Reed? Oh, A, A. Okay. Sorry, I just had to add something to that.
No, no problem, thank you.
Okay, we should have...
Okay, folks, I'd like to begin to call this meeting back to order. If folks would begin to take their seats, we'll get started here in just one minute. I'd invite, uh, Councilmember David Questa up as well.
Thank you, we'd like to call this meeting back to order. Uh, thank you everyone for the wonderful reception. Um, we are seated now in our temporary spaces. I would ask the clerk to recall the roll with the new members.
Yes, sir. Member Olson?
Good evening again.
Member Berantine?
Here. Not present.
Member Questa?
Present.
Member Martinez? Member Martinez? Oh, I hope we don't lose her.
Amy, are you there? You may have disconnected or lost Amy. Help us out, Sam, are we connected or no?
She was muted.
Sorry. Member...
We're not connected with her. Uh, we'll come back to Councilmember Martinez.
Member Russell?
Present.
Member Wink?
Present.
Mayor Jefferson?
Here. And we'll give just a moment while we connect with, uh, Councilwoman Martinez.
Hi, this is Amy. I can't get to the phone right now, so maybe I can... Okay, thanks.
Okay. A point of order, I really don't think we need this kind of disruption to the meeting. Can we...
Yeah, I'm going to ask IT to attempt to connect again, uh, and if we're unable to connect, uh, here in about a minute, uh, we will move on past the roll call without Councilmember Martinez's presence.
Empty. That's a honeymoon for you.
Yeah. 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 That's a honeymoon for you. Yeah. 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 And then I also discussed in my comments, I don't know, I mean, it was, it was difficult, but I think we ended up in a good spot for the session. Agreed.
Had Aaron Reed... I think he was very decisive.
Thank you.
Don't worry. Perfect. Was that right, Steph? A R O. Reed? Oh, A, A. Okay. Sorry, I just had to add something to that.
No, no problem, thank you.
Okay, we should have... Okay. We should have...
Okay, folks, I'd like to begin to call this meeting back to order. If folks would begin to take their seats, we'll get started here in just one minute. I'd invite, uh, Councilmember David Questa up as well.
Thank you, we'd like to call this meeting back to order.
Don't worry. Was that right, Steph? Reed? Oh, A-A-R? Sorry, I just had to add something.
No, no problem, thank you. Okay, folks, I'd like to begin to call this meeting back to order, if folks would begin to take their seats, we'll get started here in just one minute. I'd invite, uh... Councilmember David Questa up as well. Thank you, I'd like to call this meeting back to order, uh, thank you everyone, uh, for the wonderful reception, um, we are seated now in our temporary spaces, I would ask the clerk to, uh, recall the roll with the new members.
Yes sir. Member Olson?
Good evening again.
Member Berantine?
Here. Not present.
Member Questa?
Present.
Member Martinez? Member Martinez? I hope we didn't lose her.
Amy, are you there? We may have disconnected or lost Amy. Help us out, Sam, are we connected or no?
Sorry.
Uh, we're not connected with her, uh, we'll come back to Councilmember Martinez.
Member Russell?
Present.
Member Wink?
Present.
Mayor Jefferson?
Here.
And we'll give just a moment while we connect with, uh, Councilwoman Martinez.
Hi, this is Amy, I can't get to the phone right now, so leave me a message. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Point of order, I really don't think we need this kind of disruption to the meeting. Can we?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask, uh, IT to attempt to connect again, uh, and if we're unable to connect, uh, here in about a minute, uh, we will move on past the roll call without Councilmember Martinez's presence.
Empty.
That's a honeymoon for you.
Hi, this is Amy, I can't get to the phone right now, so...
Hey, I'm gonna ask for just a really brief delay here in just a moment, let's give her an opportunity to reconnect, I apologize, we should have done this during the break.
Point of order.
Yes ma'am?
Um, why do we have to wait, um, she was supposed to be ready, and to delay the council meeting any longer, I think is...
We're gonna give it just one moment, as I said a moment ago, um, and we're gonna reconnect, give her another chance to reconnect, if she's unable to connect, we'll move past, uh, the roll call issue.
Could we at least make sure that this is put on the agenda as part of it, that even in the communities where this is allowed, the very few communities and rural areas where this is even allowed, it is specifically written out that there cannot be a disruption of the meeting in order to do it, so, let's make mental note that this is, um, problematic at best to try to do this technically and logistically, legally.
I don't disagree, uh, this is our first rodeo, Councilmember Olson.
So I, I, um, have talked to just a number of council members around the metro area that do this all the time, and, um, I don't think it's that big of a deal, so, I know it's important for us to think it through, and I'm looking forward to having some structure about how we're gonna do this, but it is not unusual to do what we're doing tonight, it's just unfortunate given the situation.
Where else do they do it in the metro area?
Centennial, Cherry Hills, Greenwood Village.
Um...
At least, that's what they do.
You'll have to, you'll have to provide those, 'cause I didn't find any of those rules, but to do this anecdotally, haphazardly, like we've done this, is just foolhardy. And now we're discussing it when it wasn't on the agenda, 'cause we're waiting, so, I would like to move on and do something else.
Can we give one more phone call, and if we're not able to connect, let's move forward.
She's on a cruise.
Yeah, she said she got disconnected. She did give me a message saying she got disconnected, asking us to call her back, that's why I'm trying to give it another chance here. Did you try the right number there that time, I think? We connected with her voicemail just a moment ago, so, did we not find her phone number? Uh, are we calling her cell?
Oh lord.
What number do you have, if you can't, if you're not reading in the record?
Does anybody have a good number for Amy?
Yeah, I mean, I've got her cell.
Why don't you call her and tell her to answer the phone?
Hi, this is Amy, I can't get to the phone right now, so leave me a message and I'll call you back as soon as I can, thanks.
Thank you for trying, Council, um, city clerk, will you please continue with the roll call?
Six members present, one absent, one absent being Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, uh, we do have a quorum. Like to move us on to, um, five B six, I'm sorry, five B seven, this is, uh, the mayor calling for nominations of the mayor, uh, prior to moving forward with a motion, I would like to, uh, advise, uh, I guess the council, um, the staff and the public, uh, about, um, my transition from, uh, mayor and representative at District One over to the judicial, um, side of things, of becoming the next Inglewood judge, um, you know, I just wanted to, uh, let everyone know that there was not a lot of legal guidance out there, um, most of our documents, the charter, um, council ordinances and policies and laws here in Inglewood do not contemplate such a move, um, and so, you know, with the decision, uh, on this, I was really left with, um, an ethical issue of what is in the best interest of the city of Inglewood, um, and so I tried to consider, uh, in making a determination of, of how to proceed, um, several different factors of, um, the separation of powers sort of doctrine, and the status of our sort of, uh, political, uh, environment here, and again, uh, what is truly in the best interest of the ci- of the city, and, um, you know, when I took into, um, um, contemplation the totality of the circumstances, I think it's in the best interest of the city of Inglewood, uh, to have me continue to serve in my role, uh, until January eighth, at the moment that I am sworn in, uh, as the judge, and the true legal conflict of interest begins at that moment, uh, and so, uh, my thought is, I'm happy to fulfill my role, uh, as a representative from District One, uh, through that date, um... You know, that being said, uh, we're still working out some details about how exactly that transition will happen, uh, we know that it will happen on January eighth, the details of that, uh, whether or not the council will be involved, um, where it'll happen, who will be swearing me in, some of these details, we have yet to sort of totally flush out, I do expect to highlight all of these in, uh, a resignation letter that I will be submitting, uh, to this body, um, hopefully by our next regular meeting to flush out some of those details, um, you know, at a later date, maybe not at this time, but a later date or sometime, I'd like to hear some feedback about whether, uh, council would like this to be a council meeting or not, obviously, um, one of the considerations of whether or not to stay on and how this transition should go is, how are we gonna seek a replacement from District One, and, um, that process basically is a call for applications, um, and an appointment, uh, within thirty days is what the charter requires, it does not provide a structure for that, uh, and I think there was some concern voiced to me by the public, by members of council, about, um, the timing of that, and, uh, you know, thirty days to complete that, had I left tonight, would be difficult, uh, to be able to get in a call for applications with any substantial time, uh, for interviews, as well as, uh, an actual appointment, so, again, I have decided to stay on until January eighth, I did think that that guidance, um, uh, should be applied before we move on, um, to the call for the nominations for mayor, uh, Councilmember Olson.
Mayor, I want to thank you for making that decision, I know it wasn't an easy one, um, you could very easily be done tonight, and, um, I think having six is a very difficult, uh, situation to leave us in, so I really thank you for being willing to do this to the end, and in that spirit, I'd like to, um, nominate you to continue as mayor until we have a full seated seven, a- at least as close as we can get to that, um, shortly after you are then sworn in as the judge.
Thank you.
By the way, thank... Congratulations.
My, you know, my, my thought is, uh, you know, I don't know if a nomination for mayor is more appropriate, or a, a continuance to a date certain, I, you know, I, my thought is, you know, a continuance to a date certain probably makes sense, um, you know, and that if it were clear that I would maintain this role, um, city attorney, do you view that as kind of a separate function, do you think I can call for simply a continuance to a date certain?
The, the charter says that the council shall select a mayor, it doesn't have any further rules beyond that, so, right at the moment, again, you get to define how that happens.
The charter's language simply states that this election will happen after the general municipal election, the charter language does not call out, uh, the specific date of the first meeting, uh, after the election, um, there are other references to that date, uh, in council policy and other areas, uh, that do not carry the amount of legal weight in my mind that the charter certainly does, being the guiding light, um, that being said, I think what you're saying is that, uh, a motion to continue would be appropriate and, and that, uh, or potentially appropriate if, if the majority of this body views it as appropriate, um, and in your mind, that would leave me in the, uh, mayoral role, or do you think that requires a separate action, I guess is my ultimate question?
If this body were to elect you to be mayor for two more months, they have that authority under both the charter and the Inglewood municipal code.
Do they need to, I guess is my question?
I think that they do need to.
Yeah, okay.
To have a vote on that.
Okay, great, so, thank you very much for that, um, I think we have a motion on the table, is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, uh, we have a motion and a second, uh, we have, uh, several members who would like to comment, uh, Councilmember Olson, did you have anything else there? Councilmember Berantine?
I greatly appreciate that as our, uh, judge-elect, and as the current mayor, that you're willing to allow us to vote on whether we keep you or not, I'm grateful for that, um, on your issue for, um, for whether you stay in office or not, um, I would want to, uh, point out that the, um... vacancy for any office, um, you know... I'm, I'm gonna point out that, I, I appreciate all of the support, but quite honestly, it really isn't that easy to try to enforce the rules of the law, and I know I look a little curmudgeonly here, but I'm gonna go back to the charter that says vacancies, an elected officer shall continue to hold his office until his successor, successor is duly qualified, an elective office shall become vacant whenever an officer becomes incapacitated... Or if a council member shall be removed from, or become a non-resident of the district, neither which I believe has happened, um, so, the concerns over whether you have any, um, judiciary or not, um, conflict, um, you haven't taken that office yet, so, while I appreciate you going through that piece of it, I don't think there's any problem with you staying on in office until you're sworn in, um... The second piece of this is that all of a sudden, once again, we're gonna do, um, uh, something for the very first time ever happening in the city, and we're gonna go, well, um, it doesn't really say that we elect a mayor right after the election, we've always done that, we have policies and procedures that dictate that we do it the first meeting after the election, that we have, uh, uh, elect our leadership, and we do that every two years, and it happens the first meeting after the election, and it's happened for decades and decades, and everybody seemed to understand what the word present meant, and, um, what, what the date was, um, so, we're kinda cherry picking what we're agreeing to, um, adhere to, and what, and what we're not, it does say, after each general municipal election, the council shall elect, um, and we do have it in our policies that that would be the first meeting after the general election, and I don't think that we should, if, we're going down so many slippery slopes, because it is expeditious at this time to just do that, and I think it's going to cause some problems with the, um, leadership, with the transition for this council, knowing that we will have to pick a mayor... in, in January, rather than, um, uh, go through, pick the mayor, have some transition time, I think you will preside over two, maybe three meetings by the time you're sworn in, which I agree you, you can do, but that we would even consider not having a vote for the mayor, and that we would be voting to just kinda continue on, I think is, um, is dangerous, this cherry picking and deciding, re-inventing words and just deciding what we're gonna follow and what we're not, for political maneuvering is, is abhorrent to me, um, so, no, I don't agree with what you're trying to do, um, at all, and I would hope that this new council would try to, um, have a much better start in following the law and procedures, and, um, at least give the public some kind of... some kind of understanding of what we're gonna do from meeting to meeting, um...
Now, the motion on the table is to nominate a mayor, are you...
I'm very disappointed in, in you, Joe, I'm very disappointed in the whole, this whole process.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I just wanted to reiterate that my motion was to nominate you for mayor, to serve us through, and this is an unusual situation, because we have one vac- you're, you're going to be vacating a seat, we wanna have time in order to fill it with someone who has applied, we need time for applications, this is not the best time to get applications, so, what I'd love to see happen is affirm you to continue through that, so the rest of us can spend time doing that, um, as well, we are now missing, uh, a seventh member tonight, so we would be down to, if you were not able to vote, down to five people, and I would really hope that people want a very open and honest and transparent conversation about who should be the next leaders, and that we should do that once we seat the seventh person, and wherever it goes, it goes, so, I would prefer to see us, see ourselves through the next month and a half, I am really appreciative of your willingness to do that, and that's what my motion was, to elect you mayor for the next, until you're done with your...
Was it to elect or affirm?
I, I said elect, and we heard that, um, either way, it doesn't, does it really matter, it's the same thing.
Councilmember Berantine, please concede the floor to Councilmember Olson, we'll come back to you in just a moment.
Yes, I believe that's what we're doing for the short term, that's what I'm doing, so...
Thank you, Councilmember Olson?
Um, I, I just have a question, um, Councilmember Olson, did you say that only five members would vote for the leader potentially, just now? I just want...
No, there'd be six of us, uh, but I would like to have the seventh here, he could also decide he's resigning right now, 'cause he's tired of this, and I don't want that to happen, I really appreciate that he's willing to stay, I think we all know that he was thinking he would leave right after he was elected, but I don't know, I heard people...
Right, well, I just thank you for the clarification, 'cause I thought I heard you say something different, thank you.
No, I, I misspoke.
Thank you, Councilmember Berantine?
I just read why exactly, I didn't think he was going to leave, he would serve out his term, because he was sworn in to serve out his term, and he doesn't qualify to vacate unless he resigns, and I don't think anybody who swears an oath to do their job just resigns, you know, and doesn't fulfill their job, so, it never occurred to me that he would leave, um, but to go ahead and posture this in, uh, wanting to just go ahead and be affirmed, and that's what I thought was going on, if we vote for mayor, and you are mayor, and we vote for a mayor, knowing that you're only gonna be here until January, so be it, but what I thought, what you were talking about was you were just, and that you were talking to the attorney about, um, and I wish we would stop bringing you in every single time somebody wants to get their way, is that this council would talk to each other, um, is that you were trying to wrangle that you just get affirmed, that you're just gonna kinda stay on, and that, that is not what our rules say, we vote for the mayor, so if that's the case...
Clear on the motion on the table at this point, ma'am?
If... If that's the case, I'm, I'm actually kinda going in your direction, you might wanna let me, um, if that's the case of what you were saying, is that we would be electing him as mayor, as foolhardy as it may be for only that short period of time, at least we would be fulfilling the rules, and not affirming him to just stay.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I, I need for you to clarify the motion then, because I heard affirming.
Thank you, um, like to move on to Councilmember Questa.
Uh, thank you, I do agree with Councilmember Berantine that it is state, stated pretty explicitly that the council shall elect from their own mayor, um, the presiding officer, following that municipal election, which would be this evening, I do appreciate, uh, mayor, that you're willing to stay on, and that's probably the direction I would lean, I was receiving pretty overwhelming, um, voices from the community saying that they would like everybody to be seated, now, I do not envy that poor soul, or those poor souls that will be vetted to fill your seat, because I feel there's already camps aligning, and that's gonna be the litmus test, is how do you fall on mayor, not where you're on the budget, not ADUs, not any of these larger issues, and it's where you're on the mayor, um, and that does concern me, uh, and I do like that we do stick to regular order, I would hate that my first, um, vote up here would be a departure from procedure, so I would prefer that we stick to that, as you have motioned and seconded, um, I do have an outstanding question, that is what happens to pro tem, uh, my predecessor, Councilmember Gillett served that role, he has the, um, he, I am filling his seat now, uh, so what happens to pro tem, if Joe is elected to serve another six weeks, whatever the case may be to carry us into January, and Joe is unable to make a meeting, who fills in his replacement, and I believe that would be a question for, uh, the city attorney.
Can we follow?
It is the next agenda item, if you don't mind me interjecting, um...
Thank you.
You know, and I'll bring it up right after this, but if the city attorney would like to respond...
I withdraw that question.
Okay, um... That being said, we've got a motion and a second on the table. Without any further comments, please vote on Joe Jefferson as the mayor. Before I change my mind.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show four ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Russell and Councilmember Barrantyne.
Thank you. I'll move us on to 5B7 and call for nominations of Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Olson?
Barrantyne, I was, I should be recognized first. I was, I punched my button first.
I'm recognizing Councilmember Olson.
I bet you will. Go ahead.
I feel like I'm being set up somehow here, but anyway. So, again, in the situation that we're in, it's a difficult situation. And the public can see, we're having a little bit of emotional kind of turmoil up here. I would prefer that we wait for Pro Tem until we seat the full seven. That would be my request, that we, we allow it to go for another until the, probably the 13th of January, when we fill hopefully that seat.
Thank you. Leave us, Member Questa?
I will bring that question back to the city attorney now. Are we able to operate without a Pro Tem?
I don't believe so. I'm going to, I'm looking up just to make sure I get the exact language out of the code. But the Charter has almost, the Charter has limited, very limited language on the Pro Tem, and for the Pro Tem, it states that following the general election, a Pro Tem shall be elected. Again, it doesn't give a date, but within the Inglewood Municipal Code, it sets it at the same date as, as the election of the mayor. I think that you have to select someone. Again, both positions serve at the will of the council. So, when you elect somebody, whether it's for two months or one year or two years, however you do it, by Charter, both positions serve at the will of the council. So, if you decide that you're going to elect somebody to serve as the Pro Tem and choose to revisit this at some point in the future, that is your decision as a council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
I actually believe Councilmember Barrantyne was next.
I do believe that as well. I apologize, Councilmember Barrantyne.
Oh. I think it's pretty apparent to everybody. I want to, I, I think this move for the last two meetings now to try and manipulate this leadership like this is really, really sad and disruptive, the stuff that's gone on behind the scenes. We need to have leadership, and we need to move forward with this. And so, I'm going to make a nomination. I'm going to nominate Rita Russell, Councilmember Russell, for the Mayor Pro Tem. Maybe we'll bring some sanity.
I heard a motion to continue, and I've also heard a motion to appoint Councilmember Russell as the Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like to move on to Councilmember Wink.
I would like to second the motion to continue the Pro Tem vote to a certain, a date certain, January.
Thank you. Further discussion on continuance of the Mayor Pro Tem vote to a date certain? Councilmember Questa?
Yes, I do think just for the sake of practicality, we should have somebody in place of Joe. Joe might miss a meeting. There's another six weeks. We're going through the holidays. We should have somebody, even if we revisit in January, the same time we revisit the mayor, which I'm more than happy to do, we should have somebody to fill that role. I second Councilmember Russell.
Thank you. We'll first be dealing with comments on the first motion to continue. Let's resolve that issue before we move on to the second motion. Councilmember Olson?
I think what I, the reason why I wanted to continue it is because there's very, there is very little to be done during the month of, the rest of the month of December, and I know that you have not wanted to be in a position as well to have to be the tiebreaker in a council you're not going to continue on. I would like to give you that honor of figuring this out with us and helping us through this stuff, you know, what I think is a tough time. And I think you're fine at doing this, but if we need to vote for someone tonight, fine, we'll vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrantyne?
I have nothing else to say right now.
Councilmember Russell?
Actually, I, I have nothing else to say. We can go ahead and vote on the continuance, or is that what's up next?
Yeah, we're going to vote on the continuance. I can't support the continuance. I, you know, as much as I would like to resolve this issue, I see, you know, based on folks where they're at, I feel like in order to get some resolution, in order to honor the city attorney's request, that I'm going to be voting no against this continuance. Any further comments? Councilmember Olson?
So, I'm, I'm fine with withdrawing it then, if you don't want to have to be in that vote.
Fair enough. Yeah, you want to try. Okay, so we're going to withdraw that, and your second order was Councilmember Wink, I believe. You're okay with the withdrawal?
Correct.
So, now we're going to move on to the nomination of Rita Russell for Mayor Pro Tem. Comments on that? Councilmember Olson?
I think it was, was it seconded?
It was.
Yes.
And so, I would like to nominate Amy Martinez.
Thank you.
We have to vote on this motion first.
Yep, so it will be order of operations, Russell's motion first. I did hear a motion for Amy Martinez as well. Further comments on Councilmember Russell's nomination? I will be supporting Councilmember Russell's nomination this evening. You know, I agree that this position is one that serves at the will of council. I think that the council is probably best served by having someone in this role in case something were to happen. You know, there are, I suppose, instances where the legal authority of the mayor's office is necessary. You know, candidly, over my tenure, none of those have been, you know, within a 24-hour basis, but I will say I do think it's in the best interest of the city to have somebody at the helm in case something were to happen to me, and God forbid, it's sort of morbid to think about that, but, and I will support Councilmember Russell. Councilmember Olson?
In that case, I withdraw my nomination. I think it's better to move ahead with a more unanimous situation.
Agreed. Thank you for that. Councilmember Barrantyne?
I maybe should have asked her if she wanted to do it first.
Ah, she didn't run, I noticed, you know?
The, I greatly respect the amount of work and effort that she puts in, and I hope that she's willing to accept to do this, and I apologize for, I apologize. I'm sorry. But I do think, I do think that we need to make sure that we have some, somebody that's got an eye on the ball and doing the work and who can support the mayor and be available and who does the kind of work that you do. I have a huge amount of respect for you, as much as you kind of beat me down sometimes, but I would really appreciate it if you were willing to take that on.
Thank you, Councilmember Russell.
I guess I didn't push my button fast enough. I just, I'm greatly humbled by this, and I would accept the nomination, and I'm greatly appreciative of Councilmember Olson's support, and I would gladly serve at the will of the council.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Let the record show, six ayes.
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Russell.
Thank you.
I'd like to move us on to 5B9. This is permanent seating assignment selected by seniority. We do have a lot of ties in this regard, so I'll try to work through this, and please be vocal if you feel like, at any point, I'm not honoring the appropriate chain of seniority, but I believe our most senior member after me is Councilmember Olson. Are you comfortable with your seat?
I sure am.
Okay, and then I think we've got a three-way tie on two years of service. However, perhaps I'll give the tiebreaker to Councilmember Barrantyne, given her previous years of service. Councilmember Barrantyne, are you comfortable where you're seated?
Nope.
Please select a seat. Newer members, maybe if you want to rise for just a moment until we get this sorted. Since Councilmember Martinez is unvocal, I'll move on to Councilmember Russell. Would you like to go ahead and select a sleep man? Now, moving on, I hate to skip over Amy totally.
I actually asked her this before she left. She said she really doesn't care.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough. That being said, I'll move on to our newer members, starting with perhaps our at-large member. I'm trying to decide how to kind of break that. Councilmember Wink, please choose a seat.
Chosen.
Okay. And Councilmember Questa?
It's this side or that far?
You've got two far options, you know? Left or right, sir?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. And that will leave Councilmember Martinez on the other opposite end of the dais here. I suppose if he has a major objection, we could talk about some, something here, but I do feel comfortable with our permanent seating assignments being selected. Let's move on to 11B10.
Mayor, we just need to take a brief recess to change the voting panels out.
Okay. My thought is you...
Just a brief, just a brief recess.
Okay, fine. We'll take two minutes here.
I chose well. Now I can hear Elaine better.
Ah.
Don't mention it already.
Yes, oh, of course, yeah. Didn't receive one of these, Mr. ...
I'm going to turn it over to you for an introduction if you want. You've got one minute. You can run down there if you want.
I'm sorry. Is this my last chance to move?
No, I'm saying, go ahead and grab your folks if you want them to stick around. I'm about to turn it over to you for recognition of any family or any comments on, you know, the election or anything like that.
Yes, I think they're sitting tight.
Okay, cool.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, no comments from the public at this moment.
Hey, how's it feel? Sorry?
Okay, Mayor, I think we're good to go.
Okay, thank you. We're back in order here. I'd like to move us on to 5B10. This is recognition of families or guests. At this time, it's my honor to welcome our two newest members. Hopefully, we haven't scared you off quite yet. You know, congratulations on your election. Look forward to serving with you and on behalf of the citizens of Inglewood. I'll turn it over first to Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor Jefferson. Many of you met me on the campaign trail, my dear husband, and a lot of our close friends and friends and acquaintances I made along the way, many members of council, sitting here and not sitting here, supported me. I want to say thank you very much for all of your efforts, all of your words of encouragement, everything you did to get me into this seat tonight. As a member of our council for Inglewood, I want to be clear about my goals for the next four years. I believe I can sum them up well in three statements. Any decision I make, thought I give to the policy decisions we are, that are among us, that are upon us, will be based on, one, a sense of accountability to the city of Inglewood and the citizens of Inglewood and to my colleagues here. Two, to an intent to being extremely open. This is a government of the people, and this will back my every decision. And three, to positively affect the community through the decisions I make. Many of you might know I'm a statistician, and so I am currently working on building a methodology that enables me to measure my track record, my level of accomplishment toward maintaining these three goals or objectives throughout decisions I make, decisions I support. It's a way to keep myself in check. I can quantify what I've done, how much I'm helping the city. It just steers me forward and helps keep me focused. So, please know that these three initiatives or goals are going to be foremost in my thought as I proceed in serving the city. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Yes, thank you. Congratulations all around, Councilmember Olson, Rita Russell, Joe, Cheryl. I am tremendously grateful to the neighborhood. For the past 10 weeks, I walked around bothering my poor neighbors, weekend after weekend after weekend. I didn't have a single door slammed in my face, and I'm sure that plenty of those folks that spoke with me did not vote for me. I am still tremendously grateful to their participation in the local democracy. It is one heck of a neighborhood. People were kind enough to share stories with me that span generations of Inglewood's history. If I were not sitting here tonight, I would be just as grateful to the neighborhood. I am, again, just, I can't overstate my gratitude. I look forward to hearing everybody's voices. If you're not in District Four, please continue to call me. The more perspectives I can hear on something, the better. I like that Councilmember Barrantyne refers to her constituents as the boss. I view it the same way. So, I serve you, and I am very, very grateful, and I really appreciate this opportunity. I feel the future is tremendously bright. Inglewood's in a great place, certainly in an upward trajectory, and we can keep that going. So, thank you again. I'm tremendously humbled. I'm flattered to be up here with you fine folks, so it really means a lot to me, certainly to the city staff as well. I will be pestering you tremendously, I'm sure, over the coming months and years. So, I'm just tremendously grateful, and again, I think the future is very, very bright for Inglewood. Thank you.
Congratulations to both our new members. Okay, I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item Six. This is recognition of scheduled public comment. Our first speaker of the evening is Kathleen Bailey, an Inglewood resident, addressing council regarding health and safety, and on deck is Elaine Holtz. Good evening.
Good evening. I wish to warmly welcome our new council members. It is my hope and my prayer that your governance will be guided by a moral compass that provides for our city responsible, engaged oversight, that ensures that those in position of power and authority over others will always place the health and safety of those they exert power and authority over above all else. Our Inglewood Allen Water Frustration Plant is a regulated industry. This industry requires state health and safety regulations because the byproducts of water treatment are radioactive residuals. The state requires that each municipality that has a water treatment plant provide an engineering design and operations plan designed by each municipality and approved by the state that incorporates the state regulations regarding the safe management and disposal of the radioactive residual sludge. Inglewood's EDOP, legal agreement with the state, among other things, was for annual disposal of Inglewood's sludge. But unknown to the state for five years, 2012 through 2016, that legal EDOP agreement was ignored by Inglewood. Thanks only to a citizen complaint, Inglewood was caught on April 4th, 2016, and the state issued Inglewood a compliance advisory. In addition to ignoring state health and safety laws and regulations, Inglewood also abandoned its previous adherence to the standards, industry safety protocol of updating a RESRAD when there was an increase in the precarious program radionuclide concentrations in Inglewood's sludge. Updating RESRAD is done in order to identify the resulting increase in milliamp per year radiation dose exposure to employees, landfill workers, and the public. This allows for any additional safety awareness and protocol to be implemented to counter the identified increase in radiation dose exposure. Inglewood followed this practice in 2003 and again in 2007, see attached. But Inglewood failed to adhere to this standard practice when uranium and radium concentrations began to elevate in 2008 and skyrocketed in 2009. The radionuclide concentrations remained high, and in 2012, the state demanded that Inglewood update their RESRAD to demonstrate to the state that the radium levels had not exceeded 25 milliamp per year limit, see attached state letter. But Inglewood still refused to update their RESRAD. This was followed by Inglewood... This was followed by Inglewood's illegal sludge stockpiling that began under Utility Director Stu Fonda and City Manager Gary Sears in 2012, and continued under Utility Director Tom Brennan and City Manager Eric Keck from 2014 through 2016. These multiple years of stockpiled uncovered dry radioactive sludge piles were dumped and left next to the main employee driveway, main employee parking lot, next to the equipment garage, in front of the main dumpsters, and 80 feet away from the employee vegetable garden, exposed to cold water winds. High-level ready nucleic dust from these uncovered piles blew freely. During this period, 2009 through 2016, there were nine allen water filtration plant cancer diagnoses, seven of which were diagnosed during the period of illegal radioactive stockpiling. Four of those allen water filtration plant cancer victims died. I remain at a loss as to how and why those who made these conscious choices to disregard state health and safety laws and regulations, as well as standard industry safety practice, were allowed to do so for years. Why were they allowed to do so to begin with? Why has Inglewood not held them accountable for their egregious negligence? How can anyone in Inglewood government ignore or defend the actions of those in positions of power and authority as city managers or utility directors who disregard state laws and regulations and standard industry safety practice unless disregarding laws and regulations when economically convenient is standard practice in Inglewood? I would like to believe that is not true, but I remain at a loss as to how and why those in positions of power and authority were allowed to disregard state laws and regulations and standard industry safety practice intended to protect the health and safety of Inglewood's own employees and the public, and were allowed to do so for years.
Thank you, Mrs. Bailey. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking tonight.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elaine Holtz, an Inglewood resident. Will address council. And on deck is Jim Woodward.
333 D South Lincoln Street. Is this on?
Yes, ma'am, I can hear you.
You know, every time there's an election, I hope that there's going to be a change for the better. I missed twice, so I really didn't have any hope this time. The job is tough, and I know what's been going on for a long, long time. I really am praying for every one of you and hoping and praying that you have the wisdom to make the tough decisions. Because like Kathleen just said, things have been going on in this city for a long time that are detrimental to the population, and they've been getting away with it because nobody knew, because they didn't tell the truth. I will hold you to the fire for the truth, and I do that, and I'm ridiculed for it, but I don't care. At 86, I couldn't care less what people think about me. I'm over that period. I don't look anything like the girl I was. So I could wait with murder, but I want to tell you something. The sleeping giant of Inglewood has awakened, and people are watching and they are listening. And if you think for one minute that you're there for your agenda, or for your self-gratification, or because you want to be mayor, fiasco. I'm not tolerating the fiascos anymore. This is big time. Grow up. Do what has to be done because people are listening and they are watching. You know who you are, like the fiasco that started this evening. Didn't start in the beginning. The rules are the rules. The laws are the laws. And if you operate by ordinance and you're in a stalemate, you do precedent. And if you don't know what that means, you shouldn't be up there. So what I'm going to say to you is my best wishes are with you. But like we put you in office, you should see what happened this past election. People are watching and people are listening, and that fiasco over Joe Jefferson, our mayor. I know who's behind it and got away scot-free. I know also who encouraged it. Honey bun, your job and your livelihood is not carved in stone. So after I have handed you the whip, I want to encourage you to do your homework. That's what you were paid to do. If you don't want to sit there, as I have said before, that's okay, for whatever reason. Personal or not personal, it's none of our business. Have the common decency to step down and let somebody who can devote the time and effort to sit there. I'm tired of hearing, "Well, he's gone now. I guess I'll have to read my packet." I heard that eight years ago. No, you read your packet. If you don't understand it, you ask questions until you do. If you're incapable of understanding it, you shouldn't be there. That's all I'm going to say. But I wish you well. I know it's tough. Life is tough. That's just the way it goes. You pick yourself up, you dust yourself off, and you do what it takes because there are other people that are relying on what you do. So keep that in mind. They put you in, they can take you out. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, thank you for coming and speaking tonight. Our next speaker is Jim Woodward, an Inglewood resident. Will address council regarding the recent election. And on deck is Koeen Dickerson. Good evening, Mr. Woodward.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here tonight to congratulate our new council members. Ms. Wink, or Mr. Costa. I probably have butchered your name. I hear Joe say one thing, I hear other names, and I'm kind of lost there. But you've done well. I'm sure you are like most council members I've ever met, and I've met quite a few, having served on city council for nine years and four years as mayor. And what that's about is serving the city of Inglewood, and that is what we do up there. I think Mr. Yates had told me at one time in the last year that it's a lot different behind the dais than it is out here, which it is. And I'm sure you will experience that. There's just a couple of things I want to bring up that I want to make sure that you get acquainted with and become very aware of, and maybe you went through these with your orientation. First one would be the rule of seven. Info from staff asked to one member will go to all members. Meaning that, and the reason for this rule, is that there was a problem, a major problem in our city a number of years ago where one council member was getting information, the other council members weren't, and it had to do with the very specific ordinance that was being looked at. And it turned out the council member happened to be working for somebody that was going to benefit from the results of that ordinance. So that's important. If you go to your city manager, your city attorney with a question, you are going to see that hopefully every single member gets an answer to that question. I would suggest you educate yourself. Utilize Colorado Municipal League, the National League of Cities, books, and former members, former council members. I think we're all open to being called and talking, and talking objectively. Read, study, and understand council rules and policies. There's the charter, there's the municipal code, there's city council rules and policies. Read them and understand them. Hopefully, the city attorney is preparing and going to provide you with the book on city policies. Understand the separation between your council duties and staff. You have two employees, city manager and the city attorney. They answer to you, you discuss things with them. If you need information from a department, you get it through them, and everybody else on council gets the same information. Your duty is to work through your employees. And that would be my advice tonight. Again, congratulations. And I would like to thank council member Stephen Yates, Mayor Pro Tem, Rick Gillett, and Mayor Joe Jefferson, who will be leaving soon. I did send you all a letter today from two, from myself and one former mayor, and I believe that it would have been signed by other mayors that are still in Inglewood and that have been around. It was also an open council to, or an open letter to city council that was posted on Next Door this evening, or late this afternoon. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Stick around for just a second. Let me see if council has any questions for you. Seeing none, Mr. Woodward, thank you for speaking tonight. Our next speaker is Koeen Dickerson, an Inglewood resident. Will address council. And on deck is Idem A. Nickel. Good evening, Mrs. Dickerson.
Good evening, Koeen Dickerson, 2835 South Pennsylvania Street. You took an oath putting the Constitution over state law, and especially over our city charter and ordinances. Note the city organizational chart that puts citizens in the premier position, as does the Constitution, we, the people. We are not your customers, we are your bosses. Those of you who have acknowledged this tonight, thank you. It is refreshing. Many, if not most, of our codes and ordinances seem to be egregiously unconstitutional, confused, contradictory, redundant, and should be eliminated not selectively enforced and selectively or creatively interpreted and enhanced in violation of our property rights. James Madison, known as the father of the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, expounded on rights and property in 1792 in a short essay on property. His editorial represents a profound expression of the individual sovereignty over his possessions of every kind, spiritual, intellectual, and material. According to Madison, a human being is master of his mind and body, his beliefs and possessions, his person and property. It is all the province of the individual to create and control. In summary, Madison stated, "The right to life is the source of all rights, and the right to property is their only implementation. Without property rights, no other rights are possible. Government, according to Madison, is instituted to protect property of every sort and is judged solely by this yardstick. If the United States mean to obtain or deserve the full praise due to wise and just governments, they will equally respect the rights of property and the property and rights." You represent the citizens. Your oath is to represent them according to the Constitution so that citizens are to be free of the tyranny of even local government, and free in their rights to property and their property and rights. It is not your job to institute social programs, expand taxation to pay for them, or to go into debt, or cater to developers, or subsume the property rights of citizens to developers and staff, or to allow a muni code that constrains individuals' property rights, nor is it to fail to make the code clear and not contradictory, or try to violate federal law by acceding to a false constitutional interpretation that diversity is a value of the founding. Madison, Washington, and others were very clear that issues of immigration were reserved to Congress and not for a vague concept of diversity. It was to preserve, protect, and enhance the republic they put their lives on the line to establish. Madison and Washington argued plainly that America should welcome the immigrant who could assimilate, but exclude the immigrant who could not readily incorporate himself into our society. And those who acquire the rights of citizenship without adding to the strength or wealth of the community are not the people we are in want of. The Constitution has been honored more in the breach than in the execution. Your primary oath is to the Constitution. Learn it, weigh all your decisions and actions against that standard. If I had the ability, I would require every staff member and every council member to pass a course from Hillsdale University on the Constitution and take a course in public policy from a constitutional standpoint.
Thank you, Mrs. Dickerson. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll thank you for speaking tonight. Our next speaker is Idem A. Nickel, an Inglewood resident. Will address council regarding the history of the Gothic theater. And on deck is Doug Coen. Good evening.
Good evening, council, and welcome, new council members. We're glad you're here. The Gothic theater was built, I'm doing a little bit of history tonight. The Gothic theater was built in 1929 at 3264 South Broadway by architect Wilbert Rocher. The outside Gothic structure was built like buildings in Europe in the Gothic style, and this is how it used to look. The beautiful architecture inside was built in the deco style of its time. It had artistic plasterwork on the walls, along with ornate deco-style lightning throughout the building. It had high-sculptured ceiling, and the screen was tall and wide, that watching the curtain as it went up and as it came down was an event in itself. Ushers led patrons to their seats with a flashlight. It had 766 roomy seats and a balcony. Hollywood's heyday of dramas, slapstick, comedies, westerns, newsreels, and serials came to Inglewood through the Gothic theater. The price for a show was 25 cents for adults and 10 cents for children. There was a popcorn wagon pulled by ponies parked in front of the Gothic that sold candy, popcorn, and Coca-Cola for 5 cents. They also offered pony rides. The popcorn machine was always working, and the smell was an attraction to the theater. The Gothic theater sponsored the yearly Easter egg hunt for children on the empty lot to the south next to the Gothic, across the street to the east on an empty lot, and also in the park at Hampton and Broadway, on the Skerritt property, which is now called Highway 285. The Gothic theater was one of Inglewood's central attractions. George Perrin became manager until 1942. George Perrin was also the amateur photographer who took the majority of pictures of Inglewood downtown in the many historic events over the years. The Gothic theater was leased by Tom Sullivan and later became, he later became president of the First National Bank in Inglewood. The Gothic theater was successful for many years, but fell into hard times and disrepair when the new theater opened in Cinderella City. The Gothic invested, the Gothic theater was used for live concerts in 1990, and then in, the owner, Doug Kaufman, in July 1992, announced investing $200,000 through Gothic Enterprise to transfer the aging building. Enterprise to transfer the aging building to a high-quality facility through renovation. Plans were to make it an assembly hall for concerts, seminars, weddings, receptions, private catering parties by the late fall of 1992. But it was again sold and turned into a different avenue of events, particularly for young people and loud music. I did leave out, the first renovation was in 1950, and that's where they took off the top Gothic part, and then it was renovated again in 1990. Anyone you talk with who grew up in Inglewood, Sheridan, Littleton, or South Denver had a tie to the Gothic Theater and remembers events or has a story. High school kids liked to pull pranks, particularly from the balcony of the theater. One of the stories I heard from the class of 1950, who was George Van Drill, brought in food like spaghetti, put it in a bag, and then let it slowly slip out of the bag and over the balcony side and act like he was vomiting on the people below, which caused a lot of havoc. And then tried to run out of the theater without getting caught. On occasion, whatever the prank, some kids did get caught and others got away before, uh, you know, some escaped and some did not. After John and I were married, my husband John, uh, passed away six years ago, after he and I were married in 1955, we lived within a very few blocks of the Gothic Theater, and we would walk over twice a week to see the movies. The Gothic had two features with the newsreel in between. By 1955, the price was $1 to get in to see the two features and 10 cents for popcorn and Coke. Another reason Gothic was so special to us is John's uncle, Bert Rocher, as we called him, was the architect of that beautiful building. I look back now and I cherish those times and memories and see how quaint our little city of Inglewood has changed. And my story continues.
Thank you, Mrs. Nickel. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening? Seeing none, thank you for coming and speaking tonight. Uh, our last scheduled speaker is Doug Coen, an Inglewood resident addressing council regarding historic preservation. Good evening, Mr. Coen.
Good evening. A high school friend of mine, Doug Hubka, came up with this idea. All of us from the old days should write a story of a memory of growing up here in Inglewood. He was going to collect them and put them in a book, and then the Historic Society is going to publish them in the newsletter. One of the questions he asked is, "Did you have a teacher that challenged you and inspired you?" I had that teacher, Mr. Carlson, eighth grade, Flood Junior High. As an eighth grader, what the year was, the year was 1960, uh, before most of you guys were even born. Um, I was in eighth grade. Mr. Carlson taught Colorado history. And when we were looking through the Colorado history book, there was a picture of the face on the barroom floor up in Central City. I fell in love that day. I wanted to go see that painting. So I asked Mr. Carlson, "Can we do a field trip up to Central City?" Well, uh, no, uh, the school doesn't do field trips outside of Denver. Exelonius has a sports team. Um, what, can I ask the district? Can I call the superintendent and ask that person? Well, you can call him, but the answer's going to be no. So I called the superintendent, and the answer wasn't exactly no. Well, what if I contacted Central City High School and could get them to work with us? Can I make a call from the phone in the office? Well, students aren't allowed to call from the phone in the office. Besides, it's a long-distance call all the way up to Central City, so no. So I went home and asked my parents, "Can I call Central City and talk to them?" We don't allow frivolous long-distance phone calls on our phone. Write them a letter. Wrote the letter. The, uh, students at Central City High School were very gracious, and they sent the invitation down, said, "Well, we'll give you lunch and we'll, uh, we'll take you on a tour around the town." So, uh, I brought that information back to Mr. Carlson, and then he took the ball and he, and he got ahold of whoever he needed to get ahold of. And we got a bus, and the eighth grade Colorado history class from Flood Junior High got to take a tour up to Central City. It was spectacular. Yeah, the students were gracious. They gave us lunch and a tour. We got to see the face on the barroom floor. And then he took us to the Opera House, and then up to the Glory Hall. That's that great big open pit coal mine just outside of town. We walked around and saw lots of old buildings and met lots of interesting people. I fell in love with Colorado history that day. I began to read about the gold rush. I found out, didn't know until then, it started right here in Inglewood, about a mile from here. Something happened that changed the history of the United States, but that's a different story. I imagine making the trip to Colorado from the states, from, uh, basically the Missouri River. If you walk, it takes about a month. If you're on a horse, it takes about 28 days. If you're in a wagon, it takes about three weeks. Well, I get that backwards. Um, the wagon's longer, the wagon takes longer than the people. Anyway, it takes, it takes about a month to get here from, from, uh, from Kansas. There weren't any roads yet, but I imagine the people getting to Central City and, and then looking up at the tall mountains and trying to figure out where the gold was. I imagine standing in the, the cold water of, of Clear Creek at the South Platte River panning for gold. What an amazing group of adventurers. I read every book I could find, and the story got bigger and more interesting. The mountain men, the Santa Fe Trail, the Indians, the hardships, the dangers, and the opportunities all fascinated me. I'm still in love with Colorado history 57 years later. Thank you, Mr. Carlson, for opening that door for me. It added a whole new perspective to my life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coen. Let's see if any council members have any questions for you this evening? Uh, seeing none, thank you, uh, for coming and sharing that story. Let's move us on to Agenda Item 7. This is recognition of unscheduled public comment. We do have three, uh, folks signed up. Our first one is Beth Borman, here to speak about the topic of choosing mayor. And on deck is Scott Gilbert. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, council. Congratulations. Um, I know it's late and we're tired, so I'm going to keep this brief. Um, you guys are our representatives. You represent us in making decisions for this city. So, I would like to request that, in the future, when choosing the mayor, two things happen. Number one, um, I would request that we have public comment first, so that the people of the city could have their input heard before choices are made. Um, secondly, I would request that a vote only be taken when all council members are present, and that's because you're our representatives, and if one of them is missing, that's a whole group of people. It's not having their representation as part of the vote. Um, and finally, just an idea, Dave, I know you've had this idea, um, maybe we could have the citizens vote for the mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening? Seeing none, thank you, uh, for coming and speaking tonight. Our next speaker is Scott Gilbert, here to speak about Inglewood going forward. And on deck is Erin Reed. Good evening, Mr. Gilbert.
Uh, good evening, council members. Mayor Scott Gilbert, 4425 South Fox. I want to say congratulations to the people who joined the council. Um, it was an exciting election. But, uh, anyway, look, I can keep this really brief. Um, I appreciate you holding off on the vote for mayor. I think it's important for, for public faith and visuals, especially in a divided time like this, for, for all seven new members to be, to be ready to vote. I agree with my friend Beth. I think, uh, I hope people will make their wishes known, and it sounds like many already have. So, uh, and, uh, that's, that's about it. I, I'm glad you, I'm glad you held off. Um, and, uh, I wish all the best to this council going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening? Council member, um, Berantine.
You do know we voted for a mayor tonight. We did not hold off.
Well, I mean, on the, the post-Jefferson decision, yes.
We voted for a mayor tonight. I mean, we did, we did follow that. I just wanted to make sure you understood.
Yeah, I understood.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Move us on to Erin Reed, here to speak about Inglewood mayor. Good evening, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Erin Reed, 3584 South Corona Street, and thanks to the community as well. It seems that there is, uh, a number of six in looks for seven, and I can see how that can happen, and there could be some legal consequences on our horizon, and, uh, more, more stuff to do. Uh, cross-country and high school, I, uh, was taught by my coach to run on glare ice. So, this slippery slope that I'm about ready to step on doesn't inferiorate me one bit. I nominate Amy Martinez for mayor, and I nominate Joe Anderson, who obviously was ousted by Cheryl Wink, and Steve Yates, not for the at-large position, to, to be into a special nomination. And I know there's all sorts of legal stuff with that, so, good luck. Um, anyways, to go ahead and fill position number seven. Now, I do realize that there are other contestants and there's other qualified individuals within our city here tonight that are able to run for council. What I would like to know is, is Amy Martinez in District One? Is Joe Anderson in District One? Do we, with Linda Olson and Rita Russell being in District Two, I believe, uh, Lorette being in District Three, Dave in Four, and Cheryl, I believe, in Two, but I'm not so certain. Do we have representation from all four districts with my idea in mind? And if that is so, obviously the, uh, next step would be the special election. And then, of course, we know there's an expense with that, which I would not burden on my, uh, fellow taxpayers. But I, but I think there's an answer here as to what we can do with ourselves in the city and still have qualified candidates who were on the ballot prior, but may, uh, show interest still, or maybe they're not so interested, uh, moving forward in filling, uh, seat number seven. Whether it's represented from the correct district or not is anybody's guess. Thank you. That's my comment for tonight, and thanks for your service.
Thank you. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening? Um, council member Berantine.
I hate to break it to you, but do you know that Joe Anderson lives in District Three? Okay. I mean, I appreciate where you're going with that, but, um, we, we have to fill his spot with somebody that fills the charter requirement, so hopefully somebody from District One will come forward.
With the charter requirements, uh, be within the extremities of representing all four districts, then at-large filling in wherever they do. Is that how I'm?
Right. Joe is from District One, so it will be a District One qualified.
Up until January 8th, and then what happens then?
It has to be somebody who is a qualified elector, qualified to run in District One.
That's what I figured.
Even if we appoint.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to move us on to council response to public comment. Would anybody like to kick us off this evening? Council member Berantine.
To Kathleen Bailey, and I know that she's not here, and again, that we don't comment on her specifics on there, but I do appreciate her doggedness in following her pursuit in, in the law. And Elaine, I greatly appreciate your reminding us, as well as Koen. Uh, Koen went a little farther in a quick review of the Federalist Papers and the Constitution, but I think the sentiment was the same, that we follow the law and represent, and that you're making sure that we understand who the bosses are. Um, I appreciate, in that same vein, um, ex-council member and ex-mayor Jim Woodward, pointing out that, uh, I, I actually went back through some, um, previous transitions of councils, and I was looking for the one that went smoothly. It doesn't exist. So, I know that we like to paint 2020 hindsight as if the past was always rosy in a picture, but it wasn't as, as Jim knew for the first time when he got elected. It was, it, it is contention, there is not always agreement, and there is discussion, and that's what we're here for, so that we can best represent. So, I greatly appreciate that. I am kind of surprised that the minute people get elected, like you were talking about, they forget that they're talking to people out there and, and that's who elects them, that's who they're representing. And then they immediately get in here and everybody tells them, "You should listen to staff. You're not really, you're, you know, you don't really know everything of what's going on. Trust other people." And that are, you know, here, and, and we forget that we're supposed to be representing out there. And no matter, um, how difficult that can be sometimes, we do have to remember whether they're sitting in this audience or they're watching on TV, or, um, they're coming to our coffees or our neighborhood town halls, uh, that that's who we represent, and that we're supposed to make sure that we do do our job, and it's well, well-spoken. Um, Idem A., I greatly appreciate, um, the history on the Gothic. I, um, remember when I was on the Liquor Licensing Authority and we gave them, when Steve Shot came, to go ahead and make that a venue more for music again. And we were, um, had a little bit of a history lesson there, that Bob Hope was there for one of the openings. Lucille Ball, Desi Arnaz were there for part of the opening. It was a very, a very celebrated, really, uh, draw for Inglewood at the time, and, um, put us, put us on the map there. It was a lot of awesome history. I cannot believe, Doug, that you have been, um, that your advocacy started in 1960, that almost 60 years of, um, of unrelenting, uh, persistence on advocacy, for sure, and, uh, that your love of history has remained that strong for that period of time, and Inglewood still benefits from both. I may not always agree with your dogged persistence on some things, but you are, and I, and I greatly appreciate it. And your love of history has created both the, um, Inglewood Historic Preservation Society, as well as been very, very instrumental in creating the board. And I had an opportunity to just attend that meeting this last week, so I greatly appreciate that. We benefit from it still. Um, Scott, I always appreciate your, your comments. Um, the, um, I will just remind you that I, I worked very hard to make sure that we had recordings and that we had transparency, and I would ask you to please go back and listen to the previous councils. It is, um, the rose-colored glasses that we put on sometimes, and we forget, um, that we are sovereign people that can disagree, but we need to have conversations and bring those robust discussions forward, or we are not properly representing our constituency. The goal of this council is not merely to get along. I hope that we do, and that we, uh, respect each other, and I hope that that certainly goes forward more than it has been over the last two years. But I believe that that's the job, is to make sure that when we have a position, when we do the work, get involved in stuff, that we make sure that we're representing what we believe is the best side, and that we're always willing to have a conversation. And I've always respected that, and you, at least you're always willing to have the conversation, as am I. And Erin, um, I would nominate you, but I think you're not even in District One, so, I, you, um, I, there are times when I would, I would love to see people who are very qualified, and it's unfortunate, but once again, we do have to follow the rules. But I appreciate your thoughtfulness and that we just went through an election and that we do have a lot of good people in the city, but it has to be a qualified elector in District One. So, thank you very much. And thank you, everybody, for coming this evening.
Thank you. Any further response? Great job there. I don't think I have anything to add. Let's move on to Agenda Item 8, Communications Proclamations and Appointments. Nothing there this evening. Also, nothing under Agenda Item 9, Consent Agenda Items, or Agenda Item 10, Public Hearing Items. So I'm going to move us on to Agenda Item 11, Ordinances, Resolutions, and Motions. Uh, we do have items under 11C. These are resolutions and motions. Under 11C1, we have the resolution for 2017 budget supplemental appropriation. Um, this is the Inglewood Police Headquarters Building and Inglewood Urban Renewal Authority Funds Transfer for Broadway Improvements. Staff recommends that city council approve the attached resolution for the supplemental appropriation to the 2017 budget for two projects. For the project, uh, transfer appropriation of funds from urban renewal for the Broadway Improvement Project in the amount of $113,000, and for appropriation for a portion of the general obligation bond proceeds for the new Inglewood Police Headquarters Building in the amount of $3,150,000. Uh, let's see, our staff source this evening is our Finance and Administrative Services Director, Kathleen Rinkle. Director Rinkle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Tonight, the staff is asking for your approval of a resolution for the 2017 supplemental appropriation for the police headquarters building for $3,150,000, and also for the, um, Broadway Improvement Project for $113,000. The police headquarters building is based on a current estimate that was provided by the, um, Director of Public Works and also our consultant. the Director of Public Works and also our consultant, and it includes $965,000 of contingency, because we will break ground in December, is the plan, and we may need materials as we get started that would be not covered by the plan, so that we'd be pre-purchasing materials, or putting a shovel in the ground. You never know what you're going to dig up, so we need a little bit of contingency there. The $113,000 was generously provided by the Inglewood Urban Renewal Authority, and that was at council request to fill a funding gap for the Broadway Improvement Project. So with that, we would request your approval, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Questions from council for staff? Councilmember Russell, sorry, my little lights have got different names on them now.
Yeah, I'm pushing the wrong button, too. The question that I have, so this $3 million, 3.1 million, is really coming out of that $8 million that we had set aside for the 2017 budget?
The $8 million was just an estimate, and that was based on an earlier accounting from our consultant.
Right.
And as we've tuned it up, and the project delayed a little bit, we don't need quite as much. It is an allocation out of the 32.6 million that we received from bond proceeds.
Okay. And did, did we ever have to do any appropriation or anything when that money came in? I mean, the 32 million?
We only appropriate expenditures, we don't appropriate revenue.
Okay. So it will, but it will show as a balance forwards, the money left over?
Yes. That and any of the 3.1 million we do not spend will roll forward into that project balance.
Okay. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Berentan.
Because you put the $8 million into the capital improvement budget, whole piece of that, is that by doing this appropriation, are you going to adjust the budget for 2017 then?
Yes, this will adjust the budget.
And then, will the other $3 million that we're not going to use, is it $3 million? So you appropriate, we had $8 million in there, that was never appropriated.
About $5 million.
And we were told during the budget that we were going to have to do some kind of appropriation.
Right.
And I would still would recommend that we do that during the budget process, and not, not like this, but, so now, at this point, it's only going to be $3 million, the other $5 million then will go ahead and go into the next year. And so the budget for 2017, 18 will be changed already?
I don't know that we're anticipating changing the 2018 budget, but if not, we will be using it in 2019.
Well, where would you account for that other $5,000, $5,000, $5 million if we don't, I mean, it's currently being accounted for in the 2017 budget, and the $8 million. If we only are appropriating three, where are you going to account for the other $5 million?
It could be added to 2018 if we find we need it. Right now, we appropriated 24 million in 2018. Or we will continue a little bit into 2019, and we may need it there. So at this point, we're not exactly sure how the project will run at that end of the project.
I really would like to know that, because it kind of sounds like then we've just got $5 million floating around between now and 2019. So if we could get that information, I'd appreciate it.
I can do, I can do my best at the project.
All right. It was my understanding, when we asked this question before during the budget process, that once we appropriated the money, that we would, we would have that answer. So when you have that information, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
I'd like to move that we approve resolution for 2017.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'd like to second it.
Thank you. Discussion on 11C1. Seeing none, please vote.
All votes been cast. Let the record show, six eyes.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to 11C2. This is the Allen Water Filtration Plant GAC Removal and Installation Services. The Water and Sewer Board, at the October 10, 2017 meeting, recommended council approve by motion of the Allen Water Filtration Plant GAC Removal and Installation Services to Calgon Carbon Corp. in the amount of $397,791.90 for the three filters. Our staff sources Utilities Director Tom Brennan, Director Brennan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. And before you this evening, to recommend council approval, excuse me, of a service contract with Calgon Carbon Corporation for the replacement of the granular activated carbon in three filters, Filters Two, Three, and Five. The existing carbon has met its useful life. If you have any questions for me at this time?
Thank you. Council questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve 11C2.
I move to approve 11C2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion on 11C2? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes been cast. Let the record show, six eyes.
I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item 12. This is General Discussion. We'll start with councilmember's choice. Would anybody like to kick us off on member choice? Councilmember Russell, would you mind taking us off? Or Mayor Protem Russell, would you mind taking us off on that?
I'd be happy to. I just am very grateful for the great turnout tonight and the interest that we're seeing in city government. And I was having a discussion earlier this week with some, just a constituent somewhere, and they brought up, why is this happening? And I believe the turnout, and a lot of people are paying attention online, and that is a testimony, I believe, to city staff for, for making this much more transparent, and the previous council, for which I'm thankful for. But I'm very thankful for the participation, because if you don't come and speak to us, we don't know what you're thinking. And I'd, I also would like to thank previous mayor, Jim Woodward, for coming out. I greatly appreciate your words of wisdom, and thank you for coming to speak to council. And I just, I always love Doug Cohn's messages, but, and your stories are wonderful. I want to say thank you so much to Idemae also, because it took me back in history, because I wasn't here at the beginning when it was built, but I do have history with the Gothic Theater, because that was the movie house in Inglewood. So thank you both for keeping us aware of our history. I greatly appreciate it. And to the rest of you also, I greatly appreciate your input. And I am looking forward to working with the new council. This is a great privilege, and so I'm hoping that we will move forward, doing what's in the best interest of the city and working together. We won't always agree on everything, that's why there's seven people up here. And your interests are really represented best when we don't all agree, because then all sides are represented. So, thank you very much. And I have a couple of questions for staff. Can you, what's going on with the Golden Dragon? Has that opened yet?
No, it has not. We're unable to issue them a business license.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then, and one other question. I had a constituent come to me about using the computer at the Malle Center. I mean, this is another, the computer issue, but just specifically, they were blocked from conservative websites on the computer. I mean, this person said they could understand being blocked from pornographic websites, but was wondering why the computer system blocked them.
If you could give me specific web addresses, URL addresses, I can have it looked into. I know that in some instances, our program is pretty aggressive with respect to the names of sites, and so depending upon the name, we also don't allow people to look at guns and ammunition. And so that's something that we can look at. So if you'll pass along those URL addresses to me, I can work with John Solomon. I think he's still in charge of computers and things like that at both the library and Malle, and we'll see what we can do to open that up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
Thank you. I appreciate all the people that came tonight, and it's fun to see those who are families or loved ones, watching people, you know, be sworn in tonight in particular. I know that it's my third term, and it wasn't really the same contest that these other two had to go through, but I did want to acknowledge my family that did come tonight, my husband, who left, who has one of the better jobs on Monday nights. He picks up Panera Bread every, every night and takes it to the Inglewood High School while I'm here. And then my daughter, Marta Olson, who's sitting here for the first time, watching a whole meeting, who flew in for the Thanksgiving holidays. She's a musician in LA, so if you know anybody out there that needs a musician, you can contact her. I appreciated Mayor Protem's comments about when we have differences of opinion, it really does help to make good decisions. And one thing I just want to remind us all of, I'm looking forward to working together, and I hope that we never look at differences of opinions as not caring about the city. And I think it's very easy to accuse one another when we have a difference of opinion that we don't care about the city. We all care about the city, and we have different ways in which we focus on it, and different, sometimes conflicting, good values. We have to make tough decisions up here, so I never want to question anybody's concern for the city. That's why I think all seven should be up, are up here, well, six for now, seven, well, we do have seven, just one.
Ship was moving.
Yeah. And I, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time defending Councilmember Martinez. I do think there was a mistake in understanding what night was we were all being sworn in. She did let us know quite soon after she booked the cruise that, that she was doing this, and, and no one said anything, and then I realized what, what night it actually really was, and then it was, oh my goodness, I just bought cruise tickets. So then she let us know. So we've known for a while that she was going to be gone, so this was an unusual evening. I hope we don't have to go through ones like this again, but I think we did the right thing by trying to honor her voice in all of this. I'm thankful to the mayor, too, that you're continuing, that we are going to have you as mayor to see us through, at least through the second or the eighth, and that, that'll give us a good amount of time. One of the other things that we didn't really say in this is, if he had resigned in the last week, which he could have done easily, then we only had 30 days to find someone to fill his seat. This gives us a lot more time to call for applications, and I'm really thankful for that. I appreciate it. I'd like to have seven people be able to make a decision, as long as we aren't voting as a city for the whole thing, which could happen, too. I wanted to thank the police department for my ride-along Friday night, and Officer Bradley, right, was my Heidi Bradley, if you're interested in riding along. She was great fun. She's got amazing skills. I was just impressed all the way around. And also Commander Fender and his team, we were meeting up all throughout the night with a lot of activity, and I cannot tell you how impressed I was with the way in which they dealt with some very, very difficult situations, one of them being an overdose and using Narcan and watching that process, and how adept they were at that was pretty impressive. So say thanks to everybody for me. I, I wish I didn't see those things on Friday night, but it gave me great insight into the kind of work that you're doing and continue to do, so very impressive. Thank you for what you do every, every day of every hour for us here. I think that's it. Looking forward to working with the two new councilmembers and figuring out ways that we can really move this city forward with a lot of the goals that you had during your election. I do want to say, I was particularly delighted when I called Councilmember Yates to say, I'm sorry you didn't win, and he was at Cheryl Wink's house celebrating with her. I'm like, that is the way it all should happen. Unfortunately, it doesn't, but I just found that delightful. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink.
I think a simple reiteration of my thanks to the citizens, to my fellow councilmembers now, and to whom I did not thank before, but, but staff. From the very first day I made my first signature and declared I would run, I just want to thank you all for, for being so available and, and so ready to support and help, and answer questions at any hour of the day. You've been terrific, and I look forward to, to understanding more of the depths of how you work and why you work, and, and your, what your tenure for, to Inglewood means to all of you, and how we can work with you as members of council. I did sign up, well, I have yet to submit my document, but I'm signing up for the police academy, so to sort of second the citizens' academy, what Linda said, or Councilmember Olson. I'm looking forward to learning more about the police force and, and understanding more about that aspect of their relationship with the city. Again, to make good city, good, good decisions for the city moving forward, and positive decisions, and having proper levels of accountability. I, I want to learn as much as I can learn. I love learning, and so any of you, please continue to talk to me, as you have before, learning some of my strong points. So I'm looking forward to everything I'm soaking up, and to serving you well, and to serving Inglewood well.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentan.
I echo what Councilmember Wink said, and I believe that we've got two very hard-working new members for this council. The only thing I ever expect is that people come to the table prepared, that you do your work, and you guys just were relentless, both of you, out there talking to people and getting the issues and understanding what's going on in this community. And you're both very accountable for that work and your position, and I have no doubt that you will be able to bring that to the discussion, and I'm looking forward, really looking forward to working with both of you. So congratulations. I cannot tell you how excited I am to have you both on council. Congratulations to Joe for your election on mayor, and congratulations, council, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said Joe. My bad. Mayor Joe Jefferson and Judge-elect, because I could get a ticket, so I want to make sure I'm respectful.
Double fines for you.
And, and congratulations on your election, your reelection to mayor, and congratulations, Councilmember Russell, on your election to Mayor Protem. I hope you will still speak to me after, after that. I know you will do an amazing, amazing job. Thank you very much for taking on that responsibility. Two, I just wanted to make a quick comment to the people who set about having all the members here. We have to be very careful. I just want this as part of the discussion. When people can go ahead and circumvent the rules by merely not attending a meeting, and part of the discussion that happened at our last council meeting, my concern was that we already knew that Councilmember Olson was not going to be here in December, and so the very next meeting, we would already be short another one, and it would just continually postpone it. And so to avoid that kind of potential political gamesmanship, you have to set rules, and people have to know when things are going to happen, not only for this council to function, but for the public to know when transitions happen and when, when issues are going on. So just because somebody scheduled, I mean, I do believe that there are probably some situations, either war or natural disaster, where we can suspend rules, but I think it has to be pretty serious. And so we have to make sure that we don't create a situation where we make it so that merely somebody not coming or scheduling something, all of a sudden becomes that. Unless we do it, and everybody knows, and then everybody can go out and campaign and go, "I intend, if you elect me, to phone my vote in." And then you don't vote for people that are going to do that. There are issues where people have to know how their elected representatives are going to handle things. So we already had a situation where it could get kind of, get pushed out and get pushed out, and so there's a reason we have rules set up. And, and I hope it's part of the discussion if we decide to move forward with it, so that we don't have that kind of thing happening. But I doubt that the people who wrote this in 1950, whatever, thought anybody would ever be seriously discussing the definition of present either. So I guess the unintended consequences, and we just have to vet it as best we can. I attended the Historic Preservation Board, and there are a couple of members short there, and that, I also went to the Code Enforcement Board, and I was reminded that as important as that board is, and as new as that is, we have just a quick reminder that we do have, applications are due soon for our boards and commissions. We have openings on boards and commissions that are very important, some fledgling and new that are, that are, and we need to have some discussion about making sure that we get the word out, especially over the holidays, and then the interviews are going to be very soon in January. So make sure if you know people that would like to get involved and get on a board or commission, that they get on the website. I'm sure we're going to have the list out soon, manager. I'm sure we're going to have the list out soon, Manager Keck. It will be posted.
Actually, it's posted online right now. So if you go to the city's website and look under Boards and Commissions, you'll see the Board and Commission timeline, when applications are due and when interviews potentially would transpire in January. We're looking at 9th and 10th of January of 2018 for interviews.
Okay. And then that information also tells them when those boards meet and what, so that people can make a decision on what might fit in with your schedule. Please take the time to take a look at what's available. You never know what might fit with a hobby or other interest that you have or in your own profession. The open house for the ADUs was very well-attended. I was extremely impressed. Most of the people I talked to, regardless of what side they're on, whether they're pro or con for ADUs, wanted to know what the next step was, when there was going to be kind of a community conversation where everybody was going to be able to get together and have all of the same information and answers back and forth. I will try to find out a little bit more about that timeline. I'm sure this council will discuss that. I want to give the, I already put it out on Nextdoor, that I'm sure that we want to give the staff a little time to put some of the information they garnered from this meeting together as we're moving forward. And then I wanted to congratulate our Parks and Rec Department, and I know Jim Woodward has been on that Parks and Rec Board for a long time, and one of the things, I hope you share this with them, that I'm very impressed, I think this is the third time that I've had the honor of sitting up here and recognizing an Eagle Scout who's done a project in Inglewood with the Parks and Rec Department. One of the things that I've been made aware of is that it's very difficult to get a community or a department or Parks and Rec to work with you to do your Eagle Scout. We actually have troops that are in Denver that come and work with our Parks and Rec Department, because maybe they don't want to do the extra work, because there's liability, or they don't want to go over the project with them, or they don't want to work with them, because it's a little extra time. And I really want to make sure that we commend the people who have worked with, it was Luke McKee, who just on Saturday received his Eagle Scout, and he is over there by also school. What he did for his project was they did Cubbies for the fields, for the players, so that they could put their material, you know, while they're playing ball and stuff. So two of the fields at Miller, and I believe several of the fields over at Bellevue, and so he has to organize that and get that project together. And he was, they were all very complimentary of all the people they worked with, with the Inwood Parks and Rec Department. It's sad that there aren't more willing to do that, but I'm extremely grateful that our community, that our employees are willing to do that extra step to work with them. So if you would please pass that along. I know that they invited the people to attend. I don't believe that they did, but they did give a shout out to both the city and to that department. Please share that with them. And congratulations to Luke. I mean, I think that's quite an accomplishment for a young man, and I'm glad he's in our community, hard-working kid.
Thank you. Councilmember Costa?
I would like to repeat the thanks to Commander Fender and his colleagues over there at Inglewood Police Department. Probably way too often, a thankless job, and I really appreciate it. I think Inglewood feels like a tremendously safe city and is a tremendously safe city as well. So thank you, sir. I would like to thank Mayor Jefferson. I'm sure the light at the end of the tunnel was very bright, and I think you're a good sport for staying on the extra six weeks and allowing us to get our house in order, really make this as smooth and as transition as possible, full input from everybody, and I think the citizens appreciate that as well. We could have rushed this tonight, and we didn't, and I appreciate that we're going to be thoughtful, and I think that most of the city will as well. Thanks to my neighbors. I received a ton of communications over the past week, couple of weeks, and keep them coming. The more perspectives I get, the better. I really, really value it. Tell me what I'm doing right, tell me what I'm doing wrong. It's always, always very relevant for me to hear the opinions of everybody in neighborhoods, so thank you. I would like to thank those that offered the insight as well. I did not respond immediately, so I appreciate it. That is good guidance for what we do up here as council, and I'm sure I'll be reminded if we stray from those principles, and that is very valuable also. To my neighbor Beth, I did catch her walking down the street the other day with Dane, and I have been floating this idea of making this perhaps the last time that council selects the mayor, and we turn it back over to the citizens. In my head, and I'm two hours into being a council member, so I shouldn't get too far ahead of myself here, but in my head, how that looks is we put a measure on the 2018 ballot to convert one of the two at-large seats that will be up in 2019 to a mayor's seat. I would hold the same power, same duties as it does now, but the citizens would select that mayor as opposed to council. That would be on the 18 ballot, and then, yeah, 19, possibly, the citizens could be selecting the mayor. The only difference would be that they would be selecting for a four-year term, where now council is doing the two-year term. So something, a trial balloon, I'd like to put out there, and again, I'm just getting my feet wet with how these things go and how I need to get this appropriately in front of council for consideration. And then there's always Citizen Initiative as well, if I can't get any traction here. But a similar, well, Castle Rock down the street from us, right down the street on I-25, they just did it this past election. It passed 67 to 33 percent with citizen support, pretty similar local government, seven people on council, weak mayor. They converted one of their largest seats to that mayor. My gut tells me it would pass if it was put on the ballot in 2018. I had a minimum, I think the citizens should have an opportunity. More folks that I speak with about it would at least like to weigh in on that. So I'm hoping to get that on the ballot for 2018. And again, thank you. Thank you, thank you to everyone. I'm tremendously grateful, really looking forward to the opportunity with working everybody, tremendous group, and thanks again.
Thank you. Move on to mayor's choice. You know, again, another welcome to our new members. Really a pleasure to begin working with you guys. You know, I did want to bring up two, at least two issues. One is, you know, to begin the discussion of how the process will move forward for finding a replacement for me from District One. Again, I'm hearing from all of the council members that the sooner we get this process started, the more time we have for leaving that application period open, interview period and things, the better. You know, maybe this is a question for Manager Keck. You know, are we, you know, ready with a motion, or do we want to wait for the next meeting to kind of finalize what that kind of looks like?
Mayor, we have a staff created within our, the same software that we utilize for boards and commissions, created the back application that will be able to accept applications. We just haven't put it online, waiting for council to make some decisions and direct us to do so. So that software program is up and operational. We were in a test mode with it, and it works. I was playing with it earlier and put in several people's names as applicants for mayor and for District One, and it works. So we're just waiting upon council to tell us to move forward, and we're happy to do so. We just need to have some timeframes involved. Obviously, the charter is very clear on timeframes, and so we don't want to run afoul of what the charter says, and just prepare to do that whenever you give us a direction to do so.
Thank you. I think, you know, just some thoughts on the timeline is that, you know, I'd be officially sort of vacating my office from District One on January 8th, and obviously, the charter dictates that within 30 days of that period, we will find someone. I think this council candidly should target the second meeting in January for the appointment, if possible, and for the election of the new mayor on that date at the same time. And if we could all kind of maybe come to some general consensus on that, perhaps coming back from that date could sort of dictate to us, you know, how long the application period should go. I know that we're already sort of planning on board and commission interviews the week of the 8th, which was already going to require at least one special meeting in my mind. So now we're looking at least two special meetings in my mind during either the week of the second, the 8th, preparing for that potential action on either, what would that be, either the 15th or the 16th of January? Thank you, sir, the 16th of January. And so in my mind, that would be the good target date for this council, for both the appointment of District One as well as the new election of the new mayor. And I guess I just wanted to get some idea, perhaps the direction staff is looking for is when are applications due by? Is that a fair statement?
That's accurate, sir. I think one of the things that we're also trying to do is, again, looking at the charter, vacancy actually doesn't occur until you physically vacate the District One seat. And so we obviously wouldn't have those applications being viewed until after that. So you're exactly right, the week of the 8th, if in fact your last day would be the 8th, sometime during that week, you could potentially receive, the city can receive applications, and then those interviews could occur after that. We'd obviously, again, just want to be...
In your mind, the interview process itself could not start until after the 8th?
That's what we've, yeah, from a legal standpoint, as we were told, that, because a vacancy doesn't actually occur. Your indication of a vacancy is still not a vacancy.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, I guess I was thinking perhaps the interview process could go forward. I guess I wasn't thinking of that necessarily as the hang-up. But that being said, again, maybe the question for this council, if we're ready for it tonight, is just to give the direction of what is the due date for these applications? Perhaps it's January 1? I mean, or January 8th now, if we feel comfortable that we're not going to be able to review until after my vacation? Again, I guess my concern is that leaves a pretty tight timeline between the 9th and the 16th to get those interviews done. But if this council's committed to that, I certainly welcome that. I'll turn it over for further comment on, again, the due date and whether or not you think this timeline sort of generally makes sense. I apologize, I wasn't paying attention to who pressed their button first, so bear with me here just a little bit. Member Costa?
Yes, if I understood that correctly, Mr. Keck, we can't interview until the 8th, at which time Joe will no longer be the mayor.
That's accurate, sir.
So we will either vote without a full seven again, or be without a mayor for at least a short period of time?
Yes. Obviously, the selection of the new District One representative will only be done by six rather than seven.
And keep in mind, too, that the 8th is simply a study session night, and so the next regular meeting after the 2nd, which I would be presiding over, would be on the 16th.
So very good, thank you. So we have eight days, essentially, to not miss a beat.
It's tight.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. You know, heretofore, I think there's other examples of when a vacancy has transpired. I believe the last one was with former Mayor Olga Wolgason, when she was out. And I, looking back, that's the exact same process we're trying to adapt or adopt for this moving forward, is to receive applications and then fill, so.
So if we miss the 16th, we're without a mayor then, or we need to vote with?
You have a pro temp.
And we haven't put council one replacement in. Oh, we have, very good. Thank you. Thank goodness. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentan?
I would really like to get all of the information in the study session. I mean, I think the biggest thing that we need to do is, that it's bought us, is not that we're going to be able to go ahead and necessarily have some seamless peace here, but that we're giving people time to understand that they can apply, that there's a position that's open, rather than, as Councilmember Olson brought it up earlier, it would have been Christmas when this had come open. And if that was the case, that's the case. Nobody can stop anybody from resigning. But with this additional time, that's what it gives us, is that people know that they can apply. I do, I do agree that we cannot look at the applications prior to your vacating, and I don't think that that's as much a problem. I don't think that's an issue, but I don't think we can look at the applications prior to this. I do believe that your concern earlier about it becoming a fest of who we're going to appoint to District One based on who they're going to make mayor is a legitimate concern. So we need to follow the process, and I believe that at least giving people a little bit extra time does that. But I don't think that we should be, I think we put ourselves in a bad position if we are reviewing the applications while you are still on board, too. So we have to follow it. I do believe, again, that it says that it actually isn't vacated until you leave, and the 30 days starts from the time that you vacate that office, which I assume will be halfway through our meeting on the 8th, when you go get sworn in, which will be very celebratory, I hope. But I think that this will give us enough time. I just would like to not try to force this right now, have a discussion about it, get the information from staff, and see what we can set as a timeline, instead of trying to push this tonight.
And so your preference is to bring this back to study session perhaps next week?
Yeah, we can figure out what we're doing.
To try to gain some consensus, to put out that call at our next regular meeting, rather than trying to put out the call for applications tonight, or give the directions?
If you're interested, apply. I put out the call. The call is not the issue. I mean, we're giving people more time so that they could go ahead and apply. I think the more that we let them know that there's a position coming open, have them look at what qualifies them, as well-meaning as Aaron is, that, you know, you can't just live in District Four and go represent District One, so that they can come, find out information from the city if they're interested, and we can put the word out is what the most important piece of this is. Not whether we interview on the 8th or 9th or 10th or the 11th at 10:30, it's not as important right now, and I want to get it set so that we all come to consensus on whether or not the law really does say we can't look at anything until, I agree it is, but if we could just come to agreement instead of forcing it tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
So it looks to me like we have seven weeks if we were to say a deadline was the 8th. That's a good amount of time, I think, to get people. I mean, if we want to go another week, we certainly could. My question would be, if we have to do board and commission interviews on the 8th and the 9th right now, is it possible to move those to the 9th and 10th and actually use the 8th as a study session for this? Otherwise, flip-flop it and add the 10th as an interview night, or perhaps, I mean, Saturday morning, the 13th? I don't know how many applications we'll have. But I would definitely, if you need to have a decision by us tonight to put the call out, I would like that to start, so we have as much time as we can. We're going to have to come up with criteria and everything that we're looking at, but I would, I mean, we can't just, you know, say the call is out there, we have to formalize it, right? That's what you're waiting on. So I would like us to do that tonight, so it's open, and then we pick a date. How we actually do all of it, you know, do we say the 8th or the 9th or the 16th or something like that, I don't know. Is that what you're needing from us, though?
Yeah, obviously, there's an additional burden here in that you will be needing to interview persons, and we're not sure how many you're going to receive from boards and commissions. Actually, I should know that number, because it closed last Friday, I think last Friday. Yeah. So the, we had a number of applicants when I looked before, I think it was in the 20s. So we will need to look at how many individuals we'll need for that, but again, we're really trying to be very cautious that we do not get into, put you in a situation where the mayor, I'm not sure at what time his swearing-in will be on the 8th, to declare that you can do it on the 8th. It may need to, those interviews for the new District One rep may have to occur on the 9th or, you know, subsequently thereafter. So again, we're looking for direction. If you want to tell us to open up the process just to receive applications, that's one thing, but, you know, and the deadlines another. But again, the logistics, as I think Councilmember Berentan has brought up, is that at some point in time, you're going to need to declare when you're going to sit down with those applicants. And again, that may be multiple nights as well. It's a little bit different than a board and commission representative you're trying to select. You're trying to select another member to work with you and to represent the community, so that may take a little longer.
If we don't decide tonight to go ahead and formalize the application process, we have to wait for two more weeks to do that up here, don't we?
No, you can, you can direct us...
We can do it by consensus?
I believe by consensus, you can direct us next Monday night to say, hey...
I'm fine if we don't have...
Open it up on the 30th of November or whatever, or the next day for that matter, just tell us when you want to open, when you want it close, and we'll make that happen.
I would prefer to get a week's run on it and say that it's open now and the applications are due on the 9th of January.
Thank you. I am hearing kind of two different views on that. Hopefully, we can gain some consensus. Councilmember Russell?
I have a question. Can we actually put the call out before the opening? We can. But can we close it before, before the seat is vacated?
I think if you do it, maybe, say, the same day, you know, January 8th, because that's the day that the mayor said he's resigning, you're not going to see them until thereafter anyway. So I think that'll probably work, but I'll let our, I'm a law school dropout, I'll let the lawyer...
He could resign the 7th, too, right?
He could still resign tonight. I mean, there is no guarantee, there is no guarantee of that, and so that's what my concern is, is that if we start this process and something should happen, as there is a push on Nextdoor to say that there's some conflict, if he should change his mind and vacate earlier, then we've put ourselves into a problem, and the 30 days start sooner. So we can't start setting things in stone at this point, but if we can still put the, get applications, and that's not a problem, then what are we delaying?
And I'll just point out that the 8th is by charter. The 8th is the first Monday after the New Year's.
Yes.
I think it's supposed to be a regular meeting whereby that can, you know, kind of transition can happen, but of course, it didn't contemplate New Year's coming on a Monday and our meeting being on Tuesday, and so now this is the study session issue, which I'll get to in just a moment, but let's try to put this issue of putting the call out now versus on Monday kind of issue to bed, or let's try to gain some consensus on that. Councilmember Russell, did you have anything else?
No. No.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa.
I assume the answer is yes, but do we interview every person that puts in an application for the City Council seat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any preference on whether we get this going next week? Councilmember Barantin suggested, hey, let's, let's get this in a room in a study session. You heard from Manager Keck that his administrative authority is enough to put the call out, so once we gain consensus informally, he's comfortable moving that forward. Does anybody have a strong feeling one way or another? Councilmember Russell?
Well, since consensus can move it forward, if we, if we discuss this at the study session next week, we could gain consensus there and it could move forward right then.
Agreed. You know, if there's no objection, I'm going to suggest that let's just move forward in that manner. You know, we only lose a week in that regard. Councilmember Olson, did you have a comment there?
I was going to say, we do lose a week. We do lose a week in one of the graciousness part, gracious part of what you're doing is giving us time. So I'd like to use every bit of time we can. I don't know what would change next week. I think next week you all can figure out how we're going to go through the process, but open it up now.
Perhaps the deadline, but, you know, hearing that the deadline could be on the eighth, I could generally agree with that. Others want to weigh in, I, I'm, we're still struggling in the same spot here.
From what I'm seeing, there isn't anything different. We can get the applications. The only thing that's different is when we're going to interview and setting that date. So I think we can do that next week without stopping or delaying or causing anybody any problem. We gain nothing by sitting there telling people when the exact date they're going to be interviewed. We gain everything by just telling people, go ahead and get your references together and put your resume together and put it into the city. Nothing stops that.
I think what we gain is the ability for them to put in their application this week, for example.
But she's saying, we still do that, but we don't have to see the date, right?
Right. He just said that, that nothing stops them from putting in the application now, that, that they can do that. We don't get to see it and we don't get to review it, and we need to set a timeline for when we're going to interview, and nothing gets delayed in this process. And if you should decide to leave, we haven't set a date, and we're ready to do it sooner, maybe, I don't know.
Is that, is that okay with you guys? Are you understanding that kind of recommendation, that there could be a, a beginning of the inability to apply? And that perhaps this issue of when I vacate and other issues, you know, could be resolved or the deadline put in later? Does that make sense to you, or no?
Yeah, I, listen, we're, I'm, tonight, what I'm hoping to hear is you tell me when you want me to activate the section on our website that allows people to put in application.
I think people are saying now, and I think what I'm hearing is a little bit of, you know, wiggle on exactly when the.
We don't, yeah, I don't need to know when you're going to interview.
Yeah, fair enough.
If he decides that he doesn't want to be judge and he wants to fill out the rest of his two-year term for District One, we've got a bunch of applications. Maybe that'd be judge.
Maybe one of them could be judge.
Who knows?
Councilmember Olson.
So it's, it's my understanding, then, what we're doing is asking you to open up the application without any due date yet, but next week we will decide the due date and any other process for interviewing.
That works fine for me.
So if you need a motion for that, I move for that.
I don't know that we need a formal action. I think what we heard from Manager Keck is that he feels like in his administrative capacity that he has the authority to open this process up. Is that correct? Okay, well, then you were going to wait two weeks, then, you know, okay.
What happened the last time, we've been going back and researching what happened in the past. What happened in the past is the council directed, that's all the minutes say, the council directed the city manager. We've been interpreting that as a consensus. If, as you're sitting as a body, you want to make a motion and formalize it, that's fine, too. It's your decision.
In all fairness, Olga died. She didn't give us time. I mean, I mean, there was quite an emergency to it. There wasn't an opportunity to do anything else, so please stay healthy.
So I think we have that consensus. Councilmember Olson, then maybe go back to your motion and just, you know, perhaps make a motion to begin the direction for the opening of that application process, perhaps would be the appropriate motion at this time?
I move that we open up the application as soon as the city manager can get it up on the website. And direct, yeah, leave it at that. You don't want any more direction, do you?
Yeah, I think that's enough for now. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you. Further comment? Seeing none, please vote.
A vote's been cast, let the, the record show, six ayes.
I'd like to move us on to the discussion of liaison roles. The city manager did provide a roster of liaisons. My suggestion is that we pick this conversation up next week and that we try to gain some consensus. Looking at the schedule, nobody meets before next Monday in December, is what I'm realizing, I believe.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you. And so I think we've got an, we've bought ourselves another week. Just taking a look at what was provided, though, in the packet, I did notice a couple of maybe errors or inconsistencies. So I'd like to go over those and just highlight a couple of them. The first one that I have is Dr. Cog, which I view as one of the most important appointments, is not on this list. I am our Dr. Cog rep. Councilmember Yates was our alternate. So in my mind, as of right now, we have a vacancy for an alternate at Dr. Cog.
No, we don't, you're the mayor.
We, we don't have to send the mayor. I'm the member, but we, we also elect an alternate in case I'm not able to appear at those meetings. And so right now, the vacancy is the alternate. They are meeting in December. They meet twice a month now. They have a study session and a regular session now, so it is a pretty substantial working body. And so I'd love to, next Monday, get a alternate that I could take with me to the next meeting and begin that process of introducing them to the body. And then, once I leave, the body, or the, the City Council would, would then appoint either a regular member or an alternate, because there would need to be another appointment.
That wasn't on the list at all?
Uh, Dr. Cog was not on the list, and so I just wanted to highlight that. And then, let's see, so right now, I'm just going to run through the list of vacancies as I see them, and that is ACE alternate is, is open right now. Budget advisory, I was a little confused on. Councilmember Olson, are you wanting to stay on as the second liaison? I noticed I wasn't even listed as a liaison.
No, I, I didn't know what was happening with that. I, if, did they change the time?
They did.
To what time?
It's now five fifteen, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think I could.
You want to call that a vacancy? Let's call the second seat at BAC. And just for the city manager's reference, I do believe that we suggested we have two liaisons, if I'm not, you know, mistaken, to budget advisory. And so I'll suggest that we have one vacancy currently. Code has one vacancy on the second, again, second liaison seat. Inglewood Housing has a vacancy.
No, it does not.
Inglewood Housing, I had as member Yates is, is what was on that list. Who's the current member?
The council voted, and I have been the liaison now since June.
Thank you, and so that's a great catch. So Inglewood Housing does not have a vacancy, thank you for that. If anybody's got any corrections to this list.
Bring them on Monday.
Yeah, feel free to bring them, because I feel like I'm kind of just shooting off the fly here a little bit. Malle Center has a vacancy. Non-emergency employee retirement has a vacancy. Transportation has a vacancy. Urban renewal has a vacancy. Recall that I am no longer the Inglewood Renewal rep. I believe Councilmember Yates had sort of stepped up into that role. So in my mind, there's a vacancy at Urban Renewal, and there should also, that's a two-point vacancy. That's a vacancy as well as a alternate, if there is in fact an alternate for Urban Renewal. In fact, I'm not 100% sure that there really is a former alternate.
There is not, as a matter of fact, by, if the city attorney would check on that, please, the, I believe the state statutes specifically say only one elected official can sit on that board. So if we would go back and look at the rules on that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. And then Water and Sewer has two vacancies and potentially a third once I leave, because both Yates and Gillett were the members selected, and of course, the mayor's mandatory there. So hopefully, that gives us all some food for thought for next week, and members.
So will, will we get an updated list, then? Can we just, if you'll send us out?
Yes, that's one of the agenda items for next Monday night, so you'll have that in your packet this coming Thursday.
So if there's any other corrections, we could just send it to you.
Correct.
All right.
Yeah, the packet's going to come out earlier this week, because obviously Thanksgiving's on Thursday, so you'll get it Wednesday, Wednesday night.
Great.
So if you have changes and see it before then, please let us know.
And I don't think it's a terrible practice for council members to express interest in particular seats, you know, to say, hey, I have interest in this. That way, we can begin to figure that out, rather than leaving it all for Monday. Of course, we'll figure it out on Monday regardless. Councilmember Russell.
I just had a question. I think Councilmember Olson is going to be gone next week, so is it possible that you could get the things you would like to be on?
I, I did that last or two and, and everything, I mean, a couple went to others, but that's fine, yeah. I will definitely give a list to the mayor and manager. Do you want it to go out to you all before then, by Wednesday?
We can include that in the packet as well, so that the other members can see what your interests are and.
What time by Wednesday, and you need to buy?
Actually, we'd prefer to have by the end of business tomorrow.
Okay.
And we're giving you an extra four hours.
It's not necessary, and that even supplemental emails through the city manager's office would be helpful in preparation for Monday. Councilmember Questa.
Yes, that was my question, was in order to express interest for a particular board, we should email you, Mr. Keck, if I'm understanding correctly.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm happy to aggregate that, but again, if you would all please send me your interests, so I can put that into the packet for all the members to see prior to the close of business tomorrow.
Thank you.
And again, if that's not possible, I know that's a little bit of a stretch for everybody, but if that's not possible, please just continue to send them over the weekend. Councilmember Wink?
So I will submit my, my interest, as we've stated. I will say here tonight, I'm certainly interested in Dr. Cog and BAC. Extremely interested in those two groups.
Thank you. Okay, let's see if I had anything else for mayor's choice. I guess the last thing was January eighth, and that, again, I'll be working with staff and courts to try to figure out what makes the most sense. I think the first question in my mind is, does the council want to be involved in this process? My thought is, if they did, we could certainly facilitate that. If they didn't, that would leave you guys time to move on with interviews, perhaps, on that evening or something. But health things being equal, I'd like to see you there. I mean, so, I don't know if there's any preference from the body. Perhaps we don't need to try to come to consensus on that, but, you know, if you wanted to email me or something and say, hey, I really want to do that, or I really don't want to do that, that might be helpful for me in trying to figure out how this is going to work logistically from, from sort of a meeting sort of standpoint. I think that's all I had. Does anybody have any comments on January eighth? Seeing none, I'll move us on to city manager's report.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. Again, welcome to the new members. Congratulations to those who were elected to serve in specific capacity this evening. Look forward to working with everybody. And obviously, we want to reiterate, from a staff's perspective, that we look forward to working with you on setting some strategic initiatives and plans for the future here very shortly. Just as a placeholder council as well, I think as of last Friday, the police building group that's working on that is looking to do a groundbreaking on December 12th, which is a Tuesday. You'll see something come out, and that, obviously, the public would be invited to that as well. We haven't set the time yet for that, other than it will be on that Tuesday. So we'll look forward to that. Want to talk about next week's agenda, too, as well. So there's, there's a few things that are on there right now. We have the Board and Commission reappointment discussion, which should be just giving you a number of applicants and an idea of, of where the vacancies lie. City Council policy review's on there for next week. ADU follow-up, so in regard, as, as Councilmember Barantin brought up this evening, the ADU workshop was very successful. Staff has already aggregated all of the comments and has some meta-themes for you to, to look at, as well as be looking for some consensus direction on where, where to go next steps-wise with that particular issue. Monthly financial review will transpire, and now we've added District One replacement process, which sounds like it might be a shorter discussion.
In liaisons, we.
In liaison is on there, yep, sorry.
Should we punt one of these, is my thought? This policy review, given where we're at on some of this, I think can probably go to the next study session, is my guess.
We probably can do that, because there's another item that was on the agenda, too, from, from the previous council, and that was the immigration policy follow-up discussion, and so wondered what you want to do with, with that.
Yeah, certainly want to punt that, given what we've got on our plate right now. I would suggest that that get put into future study session topics, and that this new council will decide when is the appropriate time for that discussion. In my mind, this reappointment needs to happen, the District One conversation needs to happen, the liaison conversation needs to happen on Monday. I'll leave it up to maybe some others for comments about, you know, maybe one other, we need the monthly financial report. So even ADUs, my thought is to punt. Anybody have an allergic reaction to pushing ADU follow-up out a week or two? See, yeah, go ahead.
We might get more, I, I know that some citizens want to come and listen to our conversation. It might be better to move it into January, just to allow them to do that, but.
Okay. We'll find a new home for ADU follow-up. So my thought is, this next Monday.
I'm only one of seven, so.
This next Monday.
Nobody disagreed with you?
Yeah, nobody.
I agree with that.
I, I think the.
I think most of the citizens think that there's going to be another, like, town hall, actually, instead of just it going straight to council. So I do think a little additional time will give them some opportunity to digest the information, too.
So the remaining issues I have for next Monday are reappointment, liaison, reappointments, monthly financial report, District One replacement conversation, liaison conversation. Am I missing one item?
Uh, the policies?
Oh, the policy review. I, I think the policy review and the ADU follow-up are, are punted.
On the policies, I don't want to push those too far down the road. Getting something concrete in place, so we're all on the same page, I think is going to be valuable.
Agreed. I, I think we did add, I think it's another curveball into the city attorney's mix in phone issues. And so, you know, I don't know, my thought is that, given where we're at now, this is probably needs to be addressed when we're looking at the policy itself. And so, you know, my thought is perhaps that gives a little bit of time on thoughts on that and recommendations on that as well.
Sure.
Any, any thoughts on that, or anybody have any?
Uh, moving it to January, then?
Or even December. Like I said, I don't want it to punt it too far, either.
December would be great.
Councilmember Olson. Oh, sorry. Yeah, okay, great. Anything else, Manager Keck?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you. City Attorney Report?
Just briefly, there are two matters. There's the policy manual to bring forward, and I did include a draft telephonic policy toward the end of that, and, and I described that last week. Again, you need to know that that's just a draft. The policy manual has to be something that, that the governing body wants to adopt. But there's a second item, and that's the procedure manual. And one of the issues that you've brought to me several times over the last seven, eight months is rules of procedure. So I'd also given you a draft procedure manual. So when we bring the policy manual back, we'll bring the procedure manual back. There, when we bring the policy manual back, we'll also be suggesting a couple of other areas in which we think that it would be appropriate for you to develop policies. But I only drafted, I think, two new ones for you to look at at the end of that. So whenever you're ready to bring that back and deal with it, we're ready to go.
Are you planning on dealing with both that policy as well as procedure under that policy review item?
I think of them as two separate issues.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And I agree with Member Questa that this is probably a high priority item for this new council. If we could get, you know, some buy-in on this new policy moving forward from this new body, that would be fantastic, sooner rather than later. So I view that as a very high priority item. Councilmember Olson?
How long, City Attorney, do you think each of those conversations, given just sort of our track record, do you think we ought to plan for those?
I think that it's not going to all happen in one meeting. I think we need to have a, I think you need to have the opportunity to read what I've presented. And then I do have a very short presentation on both. Basically, I, I want about ten minutes to do a presentation on both. And then it just comes down to the discussion, the input from, from you as a body. Both of these things are decisions that you, as a body, are going to have to make. So I think that you would have an initial response to whatever short presentation and, and some thoughts. And then I anticipated that, based on your thoughts about the, some of the new policies that I've, that I've developed or drafted or put in there, that I'd go back and make some final changes and bring it back to you guys at that point for you to work on. So I do see it as about a two-step process. And the length of the time, I, I can't, I don't like to think it's going to take very long, but it's really dependent on your discussion.
Well, it's, it's helpful to know that you're thinking a two-part, two different meetings, so we get time to talk about it, think about it, come back with responses from you, and then make it. So it looks like we could do that on the eleventh, couldn't we, in study session?
Sorry, I moved council policy to December 11th. Right now, you have 2018 Community Events Plan, Comp Plan check-in. The back had scheduled a meeting to come talk to you for a period of time as well.
On the eleventh or the fourth?
On the eleventh of December. And then NavPoint is coming back to present on their leasing activities as their contract expires at the end of the year. So policy discussion, I just added it.
Thank you. I think that makes sense. I think that makes sense. ADU, did you punt that to a date specific?
Yeah, ADU, Mayor, I've moved ADU to January 22nd. That's your second study session in the month of January. The first one would obviously be taken up with interviews of Board and Commission members.
All right. You feel a little crowded before the 22nd? You feel a little tight before the 22nd?